Okay, okay. Hello, hello, everybody. Do do do, let me get myself set up. We're gonna be be over here today. Okay, cool. So, um, today, like, uh, always welcome to this linear algebra slash machine learning type of study session. Uh, you can ask me absolutely anything, right, related to what the heck I'm doing right now. Uh, to machine learning or to deep learning or like, uh, any paper you read recently that you have question about. Um, I'm here to, um, talk about it. Um, and, uh, yeah, it's mostly like, uh, uh, for people that come regularly. It's mostly a, a, a place to hang out. If you, um, want to study with me, you can. We're gonna tackle some, um, uh, linear algebra basic question. If you have very beginner question, go ahead, um, here for it. Um, so yeah, and, uh, to introduce introducing myself a bit, I'm Yasin. I'm, uh, I'm over researcher, uh, entrepreneur also. Um, I use a lot of, uh, AI, AI engineering in my day today. And I was doing computational neuroscience, uh, way back during my PhD. So, that being said, let's go. So we're over here, uh, Deep ML, like always, uh, very cool website. I absolutely love it. Um, we're gonna tackle some linear algebra, uh, question. Like the title says, uh, we're gonna go for, um, the Gauss, uh, how to pronounce this, um? It's which one is it? This one, Gauss-Cedl method for solving linear system. Um, I can actually put that here if you wanna go directly. Can check this out right here. Right? So this is this problem today. Um, I haven't checked in depth what, what we need to do, uh, so, um, bear with me if, uh, I'm a bit slow here. Um, yeah, uh, from what I understood, it's, um, uh, let's say it's, um, um, kind of a, uh, change in the, um, Jacoby method for solving linear system. Um, so we'll be able to, um, I think to use, uh, some of our learning that we've done. I think we already did the Jacoby method, uh, a while back. Did we? I feel like we did. Uh, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. Anyway, so, so we're gonna work with. And, uh, like I always like to kinda, um, cut it down a bit and then, uh, uh, like a dig on each of the part, uh, one by one. Hi, B Song. Glad to, uh, glad to have you here. Can you tell me your streaming time? Uh, I like, I usually stream on, um, Saturday and Sunday, right? Uh, but, um, uh, this we- this weekend was a bit hectic, right? The, my kids were got sick. Um, so then I just, uh, move it to, uh, the week, right? Usually at eight, uh, PM EST, right? So, um, I'm usually at eight, uh, PM EST on Saturday or Sunday. I prefer Sunday, right? Okay, so let's do that. Um, let's read the task. So we have this, we have the Gauss-Cedl function here. Uh, for those that don't know how this works, it's, it's basically like lead code, but for, um, like, for machine learning, linear algebra type of stuff. Uh, and you can see it's kinda community, um, driven. So if you want to submit a question, you can do that. Um, you can also submit solution if you, if you want to do a walkthrough and stuff like that. And there's a lot of neat feature. Today I'm gonna try to do like, uh, uh, play around with the, the neat feature. Okay, so, uh, first off, what the heck do we have? We have A, which is our, uh, transformation matrix. We have B, which is our target, right? Right, right inside Victor. Um, the X initials is, uh, let's say like the, uh, we can, in this case, we could enforce, right? Uh, if we call this function like, um, uh, an initial guess. Uh, but in our case, we're just gonna start with zeros. And N is what? Number of iteration. Perfect. So this, um, i- it's generally in these type of, um, this is, this is an iterative solver, right? Iterative technique, yeah. So, uh, generally in an iterative, um, type of setup, right? Uh, like, there's an optimal solution, right? And what you're gonna do is you're gonna do crappy solution, right? Um, iteratively until you get closer to this, right? There's two ways to stop. Usually it's like either M iteration, right? Or there's what we call an epsilon. And then like, when your changes are like, uh, below the epsilon, there's, there's no point in going forward, right? Because, um, since we're dealing with computers, there's always gonna be like some degrees of, um, uh, jitter around the solution that you have and the actual solution that, uh, that you should be adding. Um, so like the, the epsilon kind of method allow you to, um, to not like go on forever. And also good, but it means that you, you're al- always gonna go, uh, for the full length. You can do a mix of both, right? Also, uh, if you want to. Um, okay, cool. So this is an iterative solver. Um, we know that. Um, iterative solver always have like this, this flow of like, um, there is, uh, there's, uh, the structure. And then there's an evaluation, like there's a change, right? So like there's a change that you're gonna do. Right? And I will give you like something else, right? So let's say it's blue. It's the same structure, but it's blue, right? You apply some change. And then based on these, there's a metric that says like, um, uh, there's some quantity, I'll call it like a metric, that tells you if you go one or two way, right? Um, there's one way which is like, it's not good, right? It's, uh, the metric make it so that it's not, uh, it's not great. And then there's another, um, uh, way that you can go, which is like, it's good, right? And here it's either the epsilon is too small or like N. So N or, um, D or the epsilon. And here you exit if this is the case. Uh, if it, if it's, uh, if it's not the case, what you do is like you, you go back all the way here, uh, sorry. Yeah, all the way here and then you iterate. That look like this, right? Like in a very ugly, a very ugly way. That's what we're doing, right? Um, so we change something. There's a specific way of changing it. And then you, uh, have a metric that will tell you like, okay, you're good to go. Uh, you can stop, right? And then you can, you can apply some change. Uh, a lot of this, so the, the system will have, um, different behavior um, over here or over here. So, um, from what I understood of Gauss-Cedl, it's like, um, a change in a Jacoby method where you just, it just, here there's a modification and how you change stuff, right? Um, but like the metric is all the same and, and this is all the same. Once you understand these structures, it's not, it's not too bad usually, like, um. Oh, wait, we got a, we got a supporter. Yay! Hey, how are you doing, man? Uh, glad to have you as part of my supporter, dot is they too. Uh, DM me on Discord also if you have any question. I'm super glad uh, to have people, um, like you that, uh, that want to support this channel. Um, yeah, and I hope this is useful. Learning Python, any advice? Okay, cool. What type of, um, we're gonna take a break, guys. We have a question. Um, uh, for what? What, you're learning Python for, um, for, for what purposes? Is it for, uh, like doing machine learning? Is it for like, uh, more backend engineering? Um, what's the, what's the end purpose?
No, it's not rude, uh, Otto D Sheep. Uh, it's not rude at all. My background is in, um, computational neuroscience. So like, uh, neuroscience stuff. I actually did, uh, a bunch of research, um, on consciousness. And, um, and like right now what I'm doing, um, I'm, uh, I have a company, uh, which is doing supply chain intelligence, uh, roughly. That's, that's what I do.
Cool, data science, cool. Um, so my advice for, um, oh shit, did I? No, okay, cool. Uh, my advice for, uh, data science is that, um, like, it's not really related to Python, right? Or R or MATLAB or any of these, uh, uh, these technology. Um, like data science is, is a lot of, um, it's a bit more meta. It's about the data, right? The data is more important than like the implementation and whatnot. Um, so if you're learning it for the data science, uh, purposes, um, there's, uh, there's a three step that, uh, I, I always, um, I always tell my, my folks to do. First step, right? Uh, learn the tech, right? Learn the, the techniques, right? Um, so, so here the techniques. So what I mean by techniques is that it's not so much about, let's say it like, uh, it's not so much about like the, um, the specific library or anything like that. It's more about, um, wh- how to do stuff, right? And yes, library come into play like NumPy, uh, like pandas, uh, polars, like all of these, uh, different library to play around the data. Um, it's, it's like, these will be useful because you're not gonna go into like the nitty gritty of like the input-output. Um, like you, it's, it's mostly about like using the proper libraries in order to get, uh, the actual data science done. And data science, there's multiple things that are encapsulating it, right? So I would suggest take a small course. Um, the ones from Kaggle is actually pretty good. I, I don't know if you, if you ever seen them, um, they're pretty, uh, solid, right? It's these ones, right? Um, like these ones, right? So the panda one, uh, data visualization and true to SQL. Um, there's some data cleaning time series. They are fast enough that you don't like spend too much time on it. But you get the gist of it, right? Um, and then, once you kinda know a bit the techniques, right? The, you have to jump straight to, um, the most, uh, important part, which is like actually doing analysis, right? Um, it's the only thing that, that matters and like, you, you should not go into the trap of like doing data science with always clean data and always like really clear cut stuff, right? Um, that's a trap because the real data is, it's never like this. It's always a, a mess. It's always like super messy. You don't know what is what. Uh, you have to do like a lot of like, um, um, extra work outside of like programming. Um, like you, you, you really have to kinda think of the data as something else, right? And the way you're gonna shape the data, the way you're gonna pre-process it, the way you're gonna do like the, uh, the, the filtering, what, the, the way that you're gonna put some biases in it or hypothesis will have massive impact about what, whatever you're gonna have as the analysis at the end, right? And data science is a lot of like crafting a story around your data. It really is, right? Uh, even in my, in my case, um, uh, during my, uh, my research, um, it was all about that. It was all about like, okay, we have the data and we can analyze it in so many ways. But look, let's cre- craft a narrative, right? And iterate through the data, through the analysis. Um, so until we discover what is the actual story behind it. There's a lot of storytelling, um, uh, behind, uh, behind this. So, and then the last thing is like, like you do a lot of analysis and as, as you do them, you're gonna find that there's like a structure, right? Um, there's always a structure which is like, I, I, I say that like it's, um, it's kind of a DAG. I don't know if you guys know that, like a, a directed acyclic graph of things you have to do, right? And like the thing that you have to do will feed back into the, uh, other stuff. And like, like the, like the data is here, right? So this is like the data. Right? And then like, there's another step here which is like pre-processing, uh, well, um, let's say like filtering, right? There's the filtering step here, right? And then like there's another step which is, um, I don't know, like pre-processing them, pre-processing the data, right? Uh, there's another step which is like visualization. And like so on and so forth. And each of these will impact, uh, in some way like the, the other ones, right? So like, it's, it's a game, data science usually of you go from the data and then you create your pipeline and stuff and your analysis to go to the end, right? To the end of the, like, uh, at the end of here, you're, you're gonna have like, um, like, uh, uh, a question that you're gonna ask or like a solution that you're gonna find or like something that you're gonna answer for, uh, that it data. And then like you're gonna iterate on this again and again and again and again and again and again. Like that's the game you're playing with data science, right? Um, so technique, analysis, and last thing is like, uh, storytelling. Storytelling is super important because it doesn't matter the data, right? It's like what you can do with it, right? Like, uh, e- e- even if you train models and then they have a certain performance, there's a story that you need to craft behind them about like why they, how they're useful, how they're gonna be used. Uh, what's their benchmark compared to this? How are they gonna like generalize in production, whatever it is? Um, but like, that's the three things about, um, about the data science. And it, it has nothing to do with Python. You could do it, you can do the same in R, you can do the same in the, in, uh, in MATLAB, um, yeah. So I hope this was useful. I was blabbering for a lot. Check out Kaggle Learn. Um, I do, I like the courses because they're super short and they're very straight to the point. Uh, so Otto, you said, cool, I know, I know coding, but I could never get myself to learn ML at all. The concept fly over my head and drain my energy from learning. I'm trying to pick it up again this year. Um, hopefully I can get the project done for 2025. I understand a hundred percent the feeling and I think I know like what's up, right? Uh, with, um, with this. I, like I was tutoring a lot, people, um, that was trying to learn like, uh, AI, uh, AI machine learning and deep learning in the past. Um, and the issue that everybody goes through is that they tried to learn it like bottom up. Right? They tried to like, uh, okay, I'm gonna learn the maths, right? Uh, then I'm gonna learn like the linear algebra and then I'm gonna learn like, uh, uh, like, uh, linear regression, how it's worked and to the inner working. And we're gonna go to like, uh, stochastic gradient descent. And then maybe we're gonna like do the perceptron. Oh, now we're gonna do the multi-layered perceptron and I'm gonna do it from scratch. Like, by the time that you've used up all of your energy, you're, you're toasted, man. Like there's no more energy to learn anything. You're like, uh, and you don't see why you're learning all of this. Okay, you learned linear regression. Fantastic, right? Cool. Now what, right? Like you're, you're gonna literally use your implementation for like your project or like you don't even know how to do, to run the project. So, my, um, I know this is like a study session for like some very like bottom of the, of the pyramid, um, uh, like, yeah, of course you're gonna lose a lot of motivation. Everybody does. I never seen one that didn't lose motivation like this, right? Um, even the math folks at some point are like, I'm gonna go back to math. Like I don't, why should I like, they, there's an infinite amount of time you can spend on the math, right? Like you have to understand that. So, like, the first thing you have to understand with ML, so this was data science, right? Now we're gonna go with ML, is that, um, it's an empirical field, right? So what I mean is that people kinda have an idea what they're doing, but I'm saying kinda have an idea. And then they're gonna like mess around to get to an output, right? And then they're gonna get something and they're gonna be able to say whether it was good or not, right? So like, uh, that's what you're, you're dealing with. Like this is, uh, an empirical, uh, field, right? Um, stat is not really an empirical field. It's like, it's, it's a, it's a field made by theory, right? Um, like physics also is not really, uh, there's, there's different branch, right? But like it's, there's a big part that is theory. There's field like this which are completely empirical, meaning that like the discovery are made by doing stuff and then getting the data back, right? And you might not know why stuff are working, right? Like if you look right now, right, there's a whole field of interpretability. Right? Like, eh, like, uh, interpretability about like what the models are doing. Think about it for a second, right? There's a whole bunch of researcher that are studying model that are already made and they're trying to figure out how they work. Okay? They don't literally know how this whole thing work. They don't know why they did this change and this change like that made the model do that stuff. And then sometimes there're emergent property of the, the model and then they don't know why, right? So if you go around learning, machine learning, um, like as a theoretical field, you're gonna be lost because some stuff don't have an answer and some stuff like, um, they, like, not everybody in the whole field know about all of the little details, right? So instead of going like this, right? Well, like this is like the math stuff. And it's like, you don't know why you're learning that. And for this, for you, this is like all a mystery. And okay, I'm done with the math stuff. I'm gonna go over here. I'm gonna like learn a bit of programming here, uh, with the math. Then I'm gonna learn modelization a bit, right? And then I'm gonna learn about like cross addition, right? And then I'm gonna learn about like, uh, the deep learning, like dude, if you, if you go like this, yeah. Like by the time you're, you're done with this, the field has advanced, uh, like, uh, light years ahead of you. You will never catch up, right? So what I, uh, suggest instead, you invert, uh, you invert this, right? You start at the top. So like, um, uh, sorry, like, uh, you start over here, right? And then you go down the pyramid like this, right? So this is you. You go, um, you can go like on hugging face right now, right? Look at whatever model is interesting for you. So let me pull this out for you, like, um, right? You go right here, right now, uh, you go in different spaces, right? You find something that is, uh, of interest for you. Let's say like, hey, I would like to, I don't know, do object detection, right? Uh, this is, or video generation, whatever it is, right? You start to read this stuff and then you start to try to like implement, like, uh, to, to, uh, uh, play around with it, right? You play around with the, this stuff and then you try to understand, okay, what's the code that made this goes, right? And then you look at the code and you try to play around with different input-output, right? So at this point, like you're using, um, the stuff, right? You're, you're, you're tinkering it, tinkering with it like, uh, like some, like a, I'd say like a hobbyist, like, like picking around, um, I don't know, like, uh, uh, some electrical appliances and looking at it, right? And try to make, uh, use of it. Do you understand every, uh, little component that goes with it? Absolutely not. You don't understand any of this, right? But now you understand how to use it, okay? And then you play around with like pre-training, pre-trained model and try to kind of cobble them together to make something cool, right? At this point, right? If you do this enough, what will happen is that you're gonna run into some issues and stuff like that. After like just a month of playing around these things, you're gonna be like, this is cool, but I can't get it to do exactly what I, uh, what I need to do, right? You're gonna start to read a bit about it and then you're gonna go more into like, I don't know, like, um, maybe, uh, training, right? You're messing around with like the birth model and then you're like, okay, I would like to, to understand what the training is about. And then you're gonna see, okay, there's a bunch of data and then you go there. And then you're gonna play around with this and you're gonna overfit your model. They're gonna be garbage. But you're gonna be able to train it, right? And then you're gonna understand that like you may be missing something about like how to train the model properly. Like there's some stuff that you've read, uh, over here about like how to evaluate some models and stuff like that. And then you go down over here, right? You're gonna go down and up like, uh, this setup a few times. And then you're gonna go down like this and up like this and up like this. And then, like, this is the flow, um, that, that you'll do. And then like, you're gonna, uh, the best way to do this is to take resources that already do this thing top-down. One of the best resources I have, uh, it's the deep learning for coder, um, like this one. Always recommend it, this one, because the guy, uh, that is teaching it, uh, Jeremy Howard, like he, he knows his stuff. Like he knows his stuff and he's know how to teach, um, the deep learning. And he, um, he, la- the whole library is made so that you can just tinker, uh, take care with it. And then he goes the, uh, uh, top-down. And if you want, then you can dig a bit into, into the thing. As you, as you've done this thing a few times, right? At some point, you're gonna feel like you're able to do a lot of things, right? But you feel that you don't understand it deeply. This is where you go deep, right? You go and then you take like a ma- uh, like a math course for linear algebra. And now like, everything will click because you know what you, why you're doing this stuff, right? You're not just doing this stuff for the sake of it. You're doing this stuff because eh, up, when, where, like at the spot where you're gonna actually use the, this thing, um, you, you understand it like, okay, there's, uh, I don't know, like, uh, dimensional T reduction, uh, stuff that are very useful. But you don't understand how they work. And then you go down and then you learn about singular value decomposition. And then you're like, ah, this is how this thing work. Or you learn about PCA, right? And like, wow, this is literally how this algorithm work. I've used it like a hundred times already. It's fine. So like while you're gonna work with these elements, you're gonna see how they click. And when you're gonna go up, you're gonna have this knowledge that is now, uh, available to you, right? But this is, like, this is the way to go with ML. You can't go top, like bottom, uh, bottom up because it's gonna be too long. Like you, you're gonna go, um, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna be, uh, you're gonna be very lost, right? But then at some point, yes, exactly. Well, you, you go deep over here, but you're gonna understand why you're going deep, right? And then you're gonna make a connection here. You're like, ah, this is the stuff that was missing, right? All this time like this. Now I click, everything click, like the whole thing starts to click very fast. Um, yeah, but like that's my, that's my two cents, uh, on this. Um, thank you for the suggestion. I just thought of modeling random Kaggle data, but I didn't even think of hugging face. It will definitely help progress my project. Yeah. Like, uh, and there's a lot of, of resources like this that goes, um, top-down, right? But in everything, 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 um, uh, that is empirical and that like you, you can get feedback from the environment, I always suggest you to go, uh, to go top, uh, top-down, right? Um, in my time when I was doing research, like it was always like this, like, uh, there's no way to, to get the project done that I could just understand like the full foundation and how it was built. Um, it was actually much better to just go top-down, try to get the stuff done and then try to understand how they connect together. And by like having this practicality in your learning, you learn much faster. Like, uh, it's crazy how, how fast, uh, you can learn. Okay, folks, we got sidetracked like crazy, but don't hesitate to, um, to ask question like this, this is like the reason why I'm doing this stuff. Okay, so iterative technique, everybody understand that. Solving a linear system of equation, it's also a pretty straightforward, right? Like if, like, if you remember, you have like a matrix like this. And then like, uh, the position over here will be the X's and then here, uh, element of it. And then you're gonna have like the matrix B, uh, sorry, the vector B in there. Um, that like the X, we need to find a solution for that, right? There's many ways of doing it and then the Gauss-Cedl is a specific way. Um, so this function should iterate to update the solution vector X by using the most recent value of the little during the iteration process. A is a square matrix, B is right inside, so this is good, this is good. This function should return the approximate solution vector X after performing the specified number of iteration. So we should not stop until the N is done, right? We already kinda see, um, the, the structure, uh, that we have to have. So here it's gonna, there's gonna be something in here that's gonna be like for, um, I in, uh, range N, right? And then we're gonna do stuff, right? And then at the end, like this is where we're gonna return, um, or, um, or, um, or vector X. So here we can say like X, um, X guess, I will say over here and we're gonna change them over here and then I'm gonna return X guess. That's that. So this is the overall structure, um, we're gonna have. Okay, so the reasoning, the Gauss-Cedl method should update the solution. Okay, perfect. Let's learn about the topic now, right? Uh, can I move this around? Oh yes, good. Can do that now. Um, so the Gauss-Cedl method is a technique for solving linear system equation. Unlike fixed-point Jacobi, Gauss use previous computed result as soon as they are available. This increased convergence resulting in fewer iteration, but is not easily parallelizable as fixed-point Jacobi, right? Um, that point is interesting because like, um, uh, the fixed, uh, point Jacobi is like, you have a batch of, uh, of, um, of data and you do it like, you do all of the X's in parallel, right? You update them all and then you do the next iteration. So you could technically, if you have a million parameters, you could parallelize it by million, do them at one instant and then like you update them all. In here, it's gonna be in sequence. So the first one need to be done because it's gonna be used in the second one, uh, which is gonna be used in the, in the third one and et cetera and et cetera. So initialization, we start with an initial guess. In our case, the initial guess will be all zeros. So here, we're gonna put that here, one initialization. So we are going to go with all zeros. That's that. And for each iteration, I update XI using this formula. So this is the formula that we're gonna use. Uh, you see, uh, we're gonna use diagonal for, um, uh, this X in one divide by diagonal and then we're gonna have B at I, right? Minus, uh, the summation of, uh, okay, so this is wait, so this is J minus I. Uh, sorry, J smaller than I. So every element that is smaller than where we at, we're doing this, perfect. Minus every element that is bigger, uh, than I, so where we're at. And this, okay, cool. So this is summation minus another summation here, uh, the I, uh, Uh the i uh i, a at ij is the same element. So here the k plus one is like, uh okay, I get it, perfect, good. So it's a bit of a convoluted way of uh doing this. So here. Okay, so this is all of the element that were previous, right? So if we're at like i equal a three, let's say, so this will en- en- include like um i uh in our current column, uh sorry, current row or or whatever. Um so a three and then we're gonna start at like, let's say, zero uh time x at zero. But the one that we like um uh we just um uh we just updated it. Right? Oops. Oops, just updated it in this iteration. And then like you do this plus and then you iterate, right? So this is three one and then times x one and same thing, right? And then here is like minus what has not been updated, right? So what has not been updated yet? So that's kind of how it look like, right? And this is also like a summation. So sum, um so if we're at uh x equal zero, um this will be nothing. There's gonna be nothing here ever and then everything will be over here, right? And uh yeah, that's pretty much that. And then like as we go, like x at n, the x at n over here, there's gonna be literally nothing here and everything over there and let's give it a summation. Okay, they can get the shape of it. Um so this is diagonal element and ag represent the off diagonal element, cool. So repeat the iteration until the change in x are below a set tolerance or until the maximum number of iteration is reached. So technically here, we can just like accumulate um we can just accumulate uh that sum. Technically, we could just do that, I believe. Um oh, this one we can accumulate, but then this one, what do we do? Can reduce it? Yeah, I'm not sure. Okay. So this is that. Repeat the iteration till the change in x are below a set tolerance or until the maximum number of iteration is reached. Or in our case, it's like until a maximum number of iteration is reached out. And maxim- the matrix form is uh the following uh the lower triangle and upper triangle, okay? Let's solve this system. Okay, so this is an example. So we have three, one equal five and then one uh two equal five, cool. So x one and then x two, we're gonna both say that is zero. So for x um one at the first situation, it's gonna be one divided by three because we're gonna get, well actually, let me do it. Gonna do that whole thing. Okay. So let's go here, right? So we have three and then we have one and then we have this five. And then we have uh one and then two and then we have five, right? So just uh okay, here. Um and then we have to find the x's over here. So uh we're doing the b here at i and then we're using the other b here at i two, is that this? Yeah, okay, cool. And then uh we're doing minus um there's something, so um this is the diagonal element. Right, so here this is the diagonal element over there. Uh same thing over here, this is diagonal element, so it's this one, right? And uh we're having it here and then this other one is gonna appear here, this won't change. And uh this b is this one, I believe. And then this b is that one, right? Um so it's just these ones that I'm not sh- entirely sure. Okay, right, because there's two element, we're gonna do minus uh one dx two, which is at the previous situation, so the thing that haven't hasn't changed was zero zero. And then in this case, it's gonna be one and then the x one because we just changed uh this one. Um it would have been nice if we could add like one or uh like three of them, but it's good. So after the iteration, the values are one point sixty six seven and this continuing iterating until the result converge to a desired tolerance. Okay, cool. It's just this part, I'm not a hundred percent sure, like that part. Um I'm gonna follow the formula and then we're gonna roll with it. Uh yeah, we're gonna roll with it. Uh but I just need to implement that summation. Um I'm not just a hundred percent sure how I'm gonna do that. Because that bit is what happened previously. And I have to sum them. I guess like I can just sum that as I go along, so this is good. At it start at zero, right? And then I just sum them up. At some point, this will dominate everything. But this one, um because at at first, let's say it's, let's say it's three, we're gonna have a three here, a zero there. Um well, that's goo- okay. Oh, okay, get it. Got it. So like this whole thing is the same thing, it's the whole vector, right? We're always gonna sum them all up effectively, right? We're always gonna sum them all up. It's just that like as we go, they just change, right? Um okay, let's say uh let's say we have like three of them, right? One, two, and then three here, right? Um you just go through it and then like as soon as you change one, you put, let's say, the uh the k plus one uh over here, you override override the k, right? And then like these ones are still at k, right? Uh it's like the k iteration that you you um uh you were at. So this one is gonna be two, it's gonna be one and this one's gonna be zero, right? They're still at that because this is a minus and another minus, so it's like minus the whole thing, right? It's just that some part have been updated and then some part are haven't been updated. So we you we keep this like, this will be x guess, right, over here. And um honestly, you could just have a like an other function that will take like say this uh this a and then uh well, you don't even need another function. You could just do it straight into the into the for loop and then you're gonna go and you're gonna do a pass through it and then you're gonna sum them up with uh r a at whatever you add uh and then the j will will increase, right? And uh you just sum them up. Once you have this new guy, right? You just you just jam it straight over there and then you update it, right? And then the next situation, when I'm gonna be there, this would have changed, right? That part will have been changed, but not this part. And then like you iterate and iterate and iterate um like that. And that's pretty much that. I think um I think that's it. I think we're ready to um to code it up. Uh right, good, let's try to do it. Disclaimer, I never get it right at the first time. I always mess it up. Um okay, cool. So this is my x guess, it's gonna be all uh nothing. And then the formula, um so here, uh note, note, we are going to do always an iteration and not uh check for convergence. Wait, that's long. And this is what I'm gonna do. So this is my uh initialization, this is my iteration step. So this is my iteration step. Right? And uh now what are we gonna? I think there's three, there's three things that we, three quantity that we need. We need to put out uh this and uh run this formula, right? So I'm gonna try to write it exactly. So uh we're gonna give go x guess at i, right? Uh equal i one divided, one divided by a at um right? So this is that. And then we do time and we're gonna have our b, so b at i. And then this is our summation that we need to do, right? Uh and then it's gonna be uh minus summation uh uh like xm. XM, we can calculate it over here. Um and for this, how am I gonna do that? Um I'll just do a, I'll just do a dumb for loop and that will be that. Sum equal zero. Sorry. Uh for uh j in oh, do I have it? Do we need a j in there? Yeah. Oh, we have to be careful here. Yeah, that's dumb. Okay, okay, yeah. So this i is not the right one. This doesn't matter. We have to have the um uh the iteration in here. For i in um ru- um uh range um length of uh length of x guess, I guess. Right, that's what we need. Okay. Um we just have to be careful here because this first uh loop is like our overall iteration. And then like in the inner loop, we're gonna iterate on like yeah uh one pass through sequentially through all the x's. Okay, so this is good and uh our x guess will change here, right? And we're gonna change them directly in the in the element. Um yeah, and then here is we're gonna do a summation. So for uh j in range length x guess and then we're gonna just sum them up. So we're gonna do this here, it's gonna be uh a at a at ij time x guess at j, I guess, right? J. And then we do x sum equal x sum plus that whole thing. Right? Then we're gonna have our summations uh. Yeah, that's it. I think that's that. Create the summation over the current guess. And then uh update the current x um i uh and add it to the x and override the x guess vector directly. In the Jacoby uh version, you can't do that, right? Jacoby version, you're gonna have to like save it and then you do the other one and then you do the other one. And then you update all of them together. Um but this one, you can just like jam it straight. I think I got it. Uh I think that's it. Yeah, that that's I don't think that there's more than that. You update the x guess like this, tack 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 tack, each one of them. I think that's that. Yeah, and then you you return it. Okay, who won the best that like no way this this is right? For sure, for sure, that's gonna be messed up. Like uh I can I can guarantee it. Okay, let's see. Let's see Mo. Uh by the way, Mo, um the guy who's over here is actually the um the creator of this thing. Okay, so what do we have here? We have, we have that it doesn't work. So the first one, this one is ex- uh was we're close to this. Uh the second one, we're absolutely not close and the third one uh either, right? So that's good. And then the second one, um we're we're good with this, we're good with that, good with it. Well, this the second second one, we got it straight. The third one, we don't. Um yep, uh we didn't uh get it right. Uh duh 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 duh. Hmm. But why, why why do I have one that is good? I am, I have no clue why I got the one that is uh good. Hmm. Here, do I do I go through it for uh not enough iteration, let's see. Print uh this. Well, this we can call k, right? So let's see if we're uh running through it. Um our x guess, hmm. So we're going through it like a hundred times, so this thing should change. Um we can maybe like print a bit the x guess here. They won't be crazy, I guess. It's a good website, honestly, it's well done. Okay, so what do we have? We start at zero zero zero, which is good. And then we go and then like we change uh the element again and again and again a hundred time. But we're converging to like some weird numbers here. Um we were actually converging on them. However, they're kind of like going all over the place. I'm not sure. The first one, the first one, we're going uh just to f- to five iteration, right? Um well, let's let's hard code this to a thousand. Are we gonna get closer? Hmm. Okay. Absolutely not. So this is not a problem of iteration and this is absolutely not right. This is huge numbers and if we go here, this converged. Uh no, it's getting closer, but it's not. Qua- uh no, it's moving around, like it's moving around a lot. Ah, I think I get it. Uh did I do I get it? No, I didn't get it. Hmm. Uh wait a second. There's maybe something messed up with what I did over here then. A i g. a i g represent the off diagonal element right okay so it's not a problem of this uh the x guess I can keep them here uh this is yeah I think the initialization is good because it's all zero is maybe here the length of guess maybe the way we sum this all up uh we should be okay because we're doing i i a at i j and then we sum the x guesses at j and we add up to the sum and then we have our little sum here oh wait number pi pi value okay uh maybe I'm just true doo b doo b doo and x zero blah blah uh change hmm okay you know what here let's check it out um let's check it out over here actually I wanna see the changes here more aggressively okay so like we are able to change that and then we changing this one too and then we changing the other one over here and we change the last one right I think this is why this one is five because you can do it in one pass and then you should have um the proper output which is looking like that um so we just stuck one iteration with one iteration I'm doing good when there's more than one here I am not doing good at all when there's five I'm not yeah yeah I'm not doing so good so in the second iteration we're not even getting close we're getting closer but then we go to negative here hmm but I'm about to overwrite them okay is it the x sum that is kind of all messed up or the should not be so the sum is zero uh wait doesn't matter in this uh okay doop 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 zero and then here what the okay no no okay yeah cool because I have to multiply by this guy so okay that makes sense that my sum is like uh this one the first one well the first one doesn't make any sense y yeah th this one no wait you're seeing some uh pretty good debugging right now right so why is the sum completely zero here uh doesn't make much sense because what's what's the a uh that we need here uh do 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 yeah it makes no sense that like the sum is zero okay wait so this is zero throughout good and uh yeah it's all zero good and then here now we get to three because it's one times a at uh i j so zero zero which is four I guess okay so this is doing three all throughout it's hard to fucking see what's going on but okay the x sum seems to be a bit weird hmm it's a bit weird okay do that's that makes sense and the second one sum doesn't change because there's only this one that is true and we're dealing with what is this the first indices no okay yeah I'm really not sure what's up okay so if I remove that should be still okay where the heck okay I have it here okay the first iteration is good the other iteration are not good at n equal five we don't have it yet um let's go back to the drawing board I feel like this is the spark this part is not right how I am setting it up so okay these are the changes this is what is like still left so we're summing this all up together and then we're adding this x i now in this mess great work I'm stuck thanks Hemet Hemet oh boy um no there's something I'm doing like I'm pretty sure it's something super dumb I'm pretty sure like I'm gonna see it and then be like wow uh not sure what it is yet but I'm pretty sure like it's not the most um uh smart I don't see it though because like um my simplification here should work I don't I don't see why it should not we're doing the summation and then we just sum it thing summing everything together right the whole jazz in this iteration and then we're just summing it again and again um is it maybe this is wrong like that that could be it okay let's let's um let's refresh our mind with like um um what do we have we have here okay what's up here for some reason this website is pretty good this one okay so there's the Jacobi method okay I don't care about this one care about the Gossel seidel method and then what they are saying the Gossel C is an improvisation blah 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 recommend the value of the variables on modify until next situation Gossel method the value of the variable are modified as soon as the new value is evaluated for existence in Jacobi method the value of x i k is not modified till the k plus one iteration okay cool that's good but okay they're doing minus okay this is what the Jacobi method which is the same thing effectively okay so in our case it's just like this x i now has been updated and now it's over here but then our i is different in our case right the i will change so it's gonna go to the other one the x guess okay that that seems to be uh sorry that seems to be good okay but okay this is this is okay you know what I'm just gonna take this right there and uh going to my local whiteboard okay right there what we have here okay so uh we're making initial guess so this this we this we've done right this is checkmark um so we get the first approximation calculating the process okay in our case we we just go straight to it the one divided by a at i i is good that's a diagonal that we're uh messing with so I think this is good that part also seems to be good I don't think it's um yeah I don't think this is the problem b one uh b one here b two b n I mean like we're we're doing this for i in range zero to uh the length of the x guess matrix um so I mean that's the part right that's the part where we're messing stuff up and in here it's minus this whole thing so it's b minus this minus this minus this so it's like b minus all of this add added together so summed up um so this is one two wait a second ah I think I get it I think I get it yep okay okay do quiz time do you see it do you see the issue right um yeah I see it I will not bet on it that this is it but um I'm pretty sure I got it right do you see the issue with what I've done with like uh with this formula is saying and with this formula is saying any guess okay right the issue is uh very simple like count count with me here right um this summation goes from what from two to n right when we're at one and then the summation goes from one and then three to n when we're at two right and like again like we we continue here and go from e uh one to n minus one right so like uh and it's it's explicitly said here you see there's no uh there's no point where j equal i right so this is no there there's none of that we we do know we do know the the end of this submission but we don't know like the the thing here is that you should not do when you're here a at i um i times x i right you should not include it in this for x at x at i so like if here so if we're here so if uh i equal j right you're gonna continue you're just gonna continue you go back you get a backup um and I think just with this we should pass there we go right any question about what just happened okay okay perfect cool so like nothing too crazy right it's just that like I'm um uh I went too fast and I didn't read the formula properly right like that's that's kinda all of it it is so the the actual statement for doing the iteration is that you should not include in your summation the element that you are uh modifying it's uh using all the other elements to make a guess about its value that's it right and then you take that value you add it back to the vector and in the second iteration second uh iteration you like omit the element that you're updating at the moment but that's that I think this is a pretty straightforward okay cool we got it um so we go into our gospel uh our green yellow and uh red method I'm gonna put it yellow right because you you need to read the formula a bit better right you almost got it that's right and that's it that's the Goss uh seidel method um in a nutshell uh but I have time for the other ones like uh that was that was nice that was uh not too bad um this one I got uh I got it last time um after some struggle uh I could maybe do another I can do another medium here um doo b doo b computer trigon basis for two D vector and I wanna do some that are too easy I'll take the next medium that I didn't do right so did all of these medium I'm gonna do uh this one correlation matrix okay so you can stick around I have I still have some time because usually I struggle for a long longer while than that uh so we can do um we can do this one uh with the correlation matrix oh as you can see I think I already did it right I already struggled where was I did I do it uh I did the Jacobi one I did it I calculated the correlation matrix and I not managed to get it right was running with that pi I'm covering a C for like solid one I don't use either the cover range from number pi uh Uh, okay, so I struggled with this one. Uh, we could we could actually um uh we could we could do this one. You can already. You can already see how much I struggled. When whenever you see, you start to see these print statements start to pop off like crazy. Um, yeah, it means that like it's not going uh, it's not going so swell. Um, okay. So let's take a, let's take a two uh one minute. I'll just. Things bit. It's getting hotter in my in my area. We just got out of the of the winter. Um. Okay, cool. So let's read the problem statement here. So write a pattern function to calculate the correlation matrix for a given data set. The function should take in a two D number array X and an optional two D number array Y. If Y is not provided, the function should calculate the correlation matrix of X with itself. It should not return the correlation metric. It will return a recall mission at a two D number array. Okay, okay. Um, so that's good. I I don't see like why what is difficult here. Uh. Okay, so if Y is none, we're doing something, otherwise we're doing um. We're doing something else here. Right? Okay, and let's learn a bit about this topic. So a correlation matrix is a table showing the correlation coefficient between variable. Each cell in the table show the correlation between two variable with value ranging from minus one to one. The correlation coefficient between two variable X and Y is given by this. Why did I struggle with this though? Oh, okay, I think I I think I remember. Uh, hey, who's there? How are you? Doing good? Thanks for joining. We just, we just got done with that Gosse deal thing. Very easy, uh almost first try. Uh, we're doing the correlation uh uh matrix calculation right now. Um, and by the way, Mo, like uh sometimes like these are a bit messed up, right? Um, I don't know if it's like the latex thing that is not um uh working properly or like maybe like this is in the maybe older format. Uh, yeah, just FYI. Um. If Y is not provided, the function will calculate the correlation machine between X with itself. So. Um, yeah, I think this is where I struggle. I think it was late also. I don't think um, I think like uh I messed up. Uh, it because uh it was pretty late. Um, so I have X here, right? And I'm calculating my covariance matrix. Uh, if Y is none with itself, otherwise I'm doing this. And then I'm calculating the standard deviation. So like what's the, this is standard deviation, this is standard deviation. Uh. Right? And multiplying them together, I guess. Right? And then do covariance matrix. Uh, divide by. Why I'm doing that product between these two? Or the vector, oh wait. Okay. Should be good. I don't see, I don't see why this is all messed up. So what's up, what's up here? Um. Yeah. So in this case. It's. X, which is X, and here is like still X, just with X. Here you have X and Y. Okay, so. Here here we're over there. No, no, sorry. Uh, in these first two, we go through the whole thing, right? And then we're calculating the covariance matrix with X alone. And then we're outputting it over here. So my covariance matrix is that. My standard deviation is. This. And I have that and then I have zero point five all across. This is what's happening with this thing. But why do? Do I have two? Oh, these are, those are, those are my two dimensions. Is that, is that it? Should expect that like this, yeah. Um. Yeah. It's not really software development. It's more like linear algebra, like machine learning, mathematics type of stuff. Uh, but yeah, that's uh, that's what I'm doing, trying to kind of untangle my head over it. Like, I think the issue I had mostly was like wrangling with like NumPy. Uh, you see this? There there's nothing like going back to old code that you wrote and then seeing like your debugging trace and then your little message that you said. That like, I think it's, this is wrong. This here. Oh man, I think, yeah, this. Oh, jeez, I'm gonna remove this for now. Um, okay, so we're mostly here. Right? This is where we're at. And then we're mostly um over there, right? Um, and we think that that product between these two, um. Awesome. Let's go correlation matrix calculation. Okay, let's go with the, I want something simple. Okay, let's go here. Sorry for um all of our eyes. So we have, okay, we have all of these uh. Okay, that's good, but that's like. That's what, that's not what I want. I want like the literal implementation of that. Um, okay, maybe this, these guys will tell me. Oof, forty slides. Not sure I'm gonna do it. Um. Collection of column vector, yeah, okay, roll. Work, I can means, means, blah, 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 blah. Okay, that's a covariance, right? The covariance matrix for the symmetric is an array of numbers. Um. Uh, I need to brush up on my Python app to see more. See ya, man. Keep it up, right? Don't forget, uh, for your machine learning stuff, start from the top, right? And then go down as needed. Um, perfect, so um. Uh, in practice for future application, can I ask you something? Would you know about net neural natural neural network? What will do? Neurotransmitter playing the transmission there. Are you, are you um indie dev James? Are you talking about the actual neurons or like uh artificial neurons? This is X and X. Okay, cool. Okay, then we used. Uh, okay, that's formula, but if I'm using coherence from number, this is good. And the correlation matrix is all this stuff, right? So. So this is a vector, yeah. Uh, actual neuron, I'm imagining what property we're not actually representing, but in machine learning models. That's a good question, right? And um. Like. I'm gonna take a break, right? So um. Like um, neurons are so so complicated, man. Like it's not. Like the 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 neurons that we have in our brains and like any any um, any like uh. Uh, living system and um, like the neurons in the neural network. Like, they are uh uh, they're they're not the same at all, right? It's not even an approximation at this point. I think like it's really two divergent ways of um encoding and 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 trying to uh come up with intelligence, right? Um, neurons are um like. That's it. You have to understand it's a living thing, right? Uh, it's the, it's it's more of like a mini computer, right? And then like all of these are um. Uh, how to say it, like, uh, kind of like computing stuff and changing states in like real time. So if you had like a time T zero, right? You have the state of all of the neurons, right? In time one, like the state is changed. They're doing stuff like um. Uh, 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 they're 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 doing stuff like a uh. That was uh, that 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 doesn't need to go through the full system in order to um. Uh, to uh to have an output, right? Versus like uh even the the best like large engine model that are uh that are massive. Um, like they're they're stateless. There 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 really are just a collection of weight and like matrix multiplication that like goes through the stuff. Like at no given point, each of the units are kind of doing stuff by themselves, right? And like this is the first thing. Second thing in um, in the brain at least, right? Uh, is that it's not just. It's not just the neurons that are doing the computation that are important, right? Like half of the brain is just astrocyte. An astrocyte are just like the stuff that goes and that feed the brain with whatever they need, right? And then like help look with the, with the, like removing like all the gonk and then all the the waste. Um, like there's a a tremendous amount of machinery that goes uh around it. So like. When we're saying that um, uh, how close an artificial neural network is from the brain. They're not even comparable. It's uh almost look like the brain is like a quantum machine of some sort. And uh the artificial neural network are stuck in like uh the bit world of one and zero. That's kind of the the um, uh, the energy that I have, right? And also, don't forget that like each of. I'll I'll put, I'll pull out the diagram here, right? Give me a second. Uh, you run, uh, uh. Like these things are so complicated, man, like it's crazy. And you could spend like, I don't know, like. A lot of time just figuring out like a s- a small little part. I don't, I want to swap the image. Um, open the mission new tab. Yeah, this part, right? Like, um, that's it, like just this is not even making justice to like how complicated. Like there there's, there are a cell that is doing something, right? It's a living thing. And um, like there this, just this part, right, is full of proteins that are doing their stuff, right? And then there's um, all of the uh, all of the uh, other machinery that is helping out. All of these acts, uh, the um, sorry, the mainland that is around. Is kind of being uh monitored by the astrocyte that kind of wrap itself around like uh. Uh, like uh the the neurons and then like help them insulate themselves so that they can the. Waste less energy um doing like a an output, right? And um, like at the end of it, it's not electricity that goes, right? You might think that it's like um, uh, it goes uh, uh, zero, one. Look at the, like a a a neuron in a natural network where it activate and and do stuff, something. It's literally neurotransmitter that is getting uh shoot it out, right? Um, and there's, it's like, it's things that you need to produce. It it's not like. An infinite amount, right? That can just fire and fire and fire. So like they have to modulate their stuff. And as soon as this like neuron is doing something, it will kind of have a feedback loop of uh 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 improving itself. So that they can do more of whatever it has has been done. There's change that is happening here. There's change that is happening along the axon. There's change that is happening like along the dendrite of the of the thing. And everything is is um, is modulated by the astrocyte that are uh gather around, right? And like, the electric, like the the uh action potential that is going through this uh this axon. Is mo- modulated by what we what we call like um ion gated channel. And there's many kind of them, right? But. It's like a tapestry of these channels that are being expressed by the the cell. And it like, it depends on many things, what type of ti- channel it will it will uh output. So. It's not just like there's a weight, one number, and then it goes all and off or or depending, right? There's like multiple array of things that they can change. And then even the morphology of like the 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 neuron is different, right? It like it it can change depending on like which area of the brain it is in, like which specialization you need to um. Um, to take, um. So there's tremendous amount of um, uh of thing that's happening, but one thing that I'd say. I I feel like. The current implementation of artificial neural network are not doing right at all. Is that these things, these neurons, if they don't fire, they die. That's how they're, um, let's say it like a, uh, th- that's how they work, right? So when you're, when you're born, there's like a lot of neurons and they just go like to whatever path like you need to to follow. And um, it's a very wasteful kind of system, but it works. Where like if they ended up not being useful for whatever reason, they just die off, right? So they have to fire. And then if they fire together with other neurons, they kind of are tied together in some way. So the circuitry kind of get like um, uh, uh, feedbacked like this, right? And um, like uh, you see that even in like um, uh, not born uh uh fidgets, like. Even the uh, the uh neural pathway for um the vision is getting activated, right? Um, even with no input, because it's it's still inside the womb, just so that the neurons don't die, right? But like that's how they're they're they're, like interestingly, this is how they made, right? Because you cannot go with life with all your neurons. Like it's too wasteful of um a a computing unit, right? Um, so you have this this setup that is happening throughout your life, like you're gonna lose neurons. And what will happen is that your pathway will be better and better for some things. And you're gonna have difficulty like uh uh making new pathways as you go, because you have just less neuroplasticity. Uh, you can still like do neurogenesis and then increase the number of neuron that you have. So that you're a bit more plastic in your in your brain and the way you you learn. Um, but there's some fundamental truth about the neurons that there's very hard to replicate in in silica. Um, yeah. So wait, uh. Some gamma receptors slow down activity in sex of the brain by increasing resistance. Does it mean the architecture is uh architecture is important for the task? Uh, yeah, okay. Even the AI centers that believe in the concept of emergent, that is the prosperity, quality in Asia. Emerging training arbitrarily large in the end. Um. Yeah, they're they're, like I would not compare the two together, like they're they're so vastly different. And like, even, how to say it, man, like um. There's something special also about the human neurons, like they're not the same as like the other animals neuron. Um, like a a human neuron can learn, can learn the X or function. Like if you plug it the right way, that you can make it learn the X or. Um, which like an artificial nu- like uh neuron cannot do it, right? And then even um, how to say it, even like different animal uh neurons, they they like. It, even though the computing unit is kind of the same, the uh interesting machinery is absolutely not the same. Like you take like um, you take a C legance uh neural uh network, right? You take that thing. So, yeah, this. Any good imagery of the, it's hard to, it's kind of hard to see. Um. Yeah. Like, y- y- you take, you take that thing over here. I don't know if you, if you know, if you guys know C legance, right? Um, that's this very shitty uh, do we have a better resolution? Yeah, here. Okay. That's a worm, a very small worm at all, like. Um, but it's a, it's a a type of um, of a uh animal that we're using in neuroscience uh uh studies. Because we can map the whole, like it's all neuron neural base, right? Um, these things have neurons, right? And and even like um, how to say it, like a. Dark grad uh neurons. Tarte grad uh neurons. Like even this has neurons. Uh have you ever seen a Tarte grad like that thing? Like it's so tiny, right? It's a very very tiny um animal. It's a water bear, very small. Um yeah, I said this, but like it's like microscopically small. Um but even these have specific neurons. And then like I think they have something like um I think it's in the signal that they don't have a lot of neurons, right? Like look, it's it's this thing, like this little tiny tiny uh tiny thing, right? It has neurons. Their neurons is not the same as us, right? Of course not. But they have they're kind of the same kind of computing unit, right? So even within the animal realm, right? You have a vast variety of what um what uh what these things are are doing, right? Um like even within our own human body, like there's neuron that are specialized in uh various different uh different things. Um which like in my view, um like the artificial neural network that we have right now, uh they're missing a lot of the stuff that makes like an uh like a an actual collection of these uh work, which is uh these are not stateless, they have a state, right? At any given point, there's a state and it changes, right? And each of these compute computing unit is kind of stand alone. Like a like like I'd say it, you like they are computing stuff as they go, right? Like each of these technically is a mini neural network that is acting kind of independently in uh of so uh of sort, right? And then this is this is one uh element of it. The second element of it is that if you look at the population level, these things are not kind of like they are always on. There's always a state that is changing and that is moving, right? The only time that your brain is doing nothing, right? And that like you're you're like all of your all of your uh neurons are are kind of uh in a in a same state is when you're when you die, right? Even when you sleep, you're just going to a different state. And then they keep on like firing up and then like uh uh running around like that. Um so there's this whole aspect I feel like that is still missing, which will be absolutely computationally prohibitive to even do at a small scale, uh which is to have like these type of uh of activity that's always ongoing and that like the 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 information pass through the the network, right? And depending on the state that it was i- it was in, it will change its output uh very kind of not stochastically, but like will change maybe the way it will respond to the to the output or not even respond at all, right? And then like you you get the output in aft- you have to get it in real time because all of these computing unit need to kind of coordinate before you get your um your stuff. Um I think this is something that is that is uh missing and it will not be possible computationally to do with the current um uh system that we have. Even like at the mega scale, um it's it would be crazy to to s- to try to to attend this. Um one like area of research that I'm very very um interested in is the area of organoids. Right, so organo- or orga- no it's my brain organoids, right? Um like these things. The this is basically like a bunch um uh like a bunch of neurons that you try to make to to like mini brains that you try to to set up. Um and uh like these, you can kind of make it in a way um that are uh connected to some input output that then could be useful for whatever purposes uh you want to do. So I I I think there's there's actually like a bridge that could happen between uh whatever is happening in like the artificial realm and then like the organic realm. Because these things already have the compute powers that need they just need to be fed with like enough food to survive, right? Um but like if you're able to do that in a state that is uh that is useful and then you have like the the feedback loop uh that is needed, right? Um you could truly make something that is um that is useful. And I think there's a lot of research right now that is trying to hook like these organoids straight into some sort of robot or something. Um it's pretty cool and uh yeah, it's crazy stuff. Um that's kind of but like a- anyone that worked with neurons, right? And they tried to like grow them and stuff, like these things just want to die, right? It's crazy, like they they don't want to be alive. They to keep them alive is you have to babysit them like you you would like uh it's hard, i- it's easier to keep a kid alive than to keep these things, right? They like uh they will they will spontaneously kind of die off. They're very sensitive to their environment, right? They're very energy um how to say it, like uh they need a lot of energy in order to 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 run. You mess one thing, they're gone, all of them. Uh they're very prone to like infection and all this stuff. So they need really like the rest of the machinery, like the rest of the astrocyte just to keep them going, right? Otherwise they don't um they don't they're very fragile uh element, um yeah. Okay, I think it's beautiful how our neural network can procedurally develop circuitry for new hardware introduced to it. Could you imagine building a GPU and not having to write this on the hard drive? Yeah, these things are like it doesn't matter, like um there's many s- there's many studies where like that's it. The brain will adapt, like it doesn't doesn't care what's going on, right? It will adapt and it will try its best to uh like uh uh like have the whole body survive. So you have people that let's say uh a good example of this is that you have people that um are not uh born with a functioning like a visual system, right? And what you would think is like, okay, the visual system atrophying and that that's it, right? It's just just done. No, like the neurons that are there, like yes, they they like their default is dying, right? But when they're in the brain kind of chemistry, they will do whatever it takes to kind of s- survive and then fire up, right? And what happened is that uh in this specific case, like they will be used in the auditory system instead. So there I I think like I can maybe find this video um. Echolocation uh kid uh with no eyes. Is this this dude? Okay, I think I found it. Eyes, it's this one. Um it's crazy shit, right? Crazy shit. So we can we can take a look at that. Um I don't know if there's audio here. Um basically, it's a guy. Like I don't know if you like understand what is going on, but like the dude like he just learned echolocation, right? That's what I like, what he that's what he did. Like uh he decided like like the the brain, like he didn't decide it, it's not him or or anything, right? It's just like um uh some part of his brain, right? Decide that it was it was not the day like uh that he will die off. And it was completely reusing, repurposing the whole visual system into echolocation, straight up, right? Like we're not even talking like that maybe he's seeing a bit. The the guy doesn't have eyes, like guys, there's no there's no like um input that goes in there. Uh when you're gonna ima- like do the imaging imaging of the brain and they're gonna do a different task, let's say for the auditory system, what you're gonna realize is that in this case, the uh auditory system crept up all the way to the visual system. Um so when he's doing the click, it's just processing like the visual system in his uh um in uh sorry, processing the auditory information in his visual system. And like now you can have a whole map of the world. Um yeah, uh no, yeah, no, a guy can go outside. Like he doesn't like he 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 you can drop him anywhere and he will be able to to do the echolocation thing. Um so that this is the interesting thing is that um the the brain as a computing unit kind of doesn't care at all what's going on and like what he was like supposed to do. He doesn't know like what he was supposed to do, right? This is also why you can take these things, take them out completely, right? And start to do stuff with them. I have a the this one I don't I don't know how they they got um I don't know how they got like ethical approval to do this shit. Okay, this one. So okay, this it doesn't matter what he's saying here, um. Okay, yeah, here. Okay. So in this particular study, right? You see like these things? Um this is actually the processor for like the like some some robotic part, right? These are the neuron that they made grow in the processor. And then they have like they figured out the way to do like this little feedback loop, right? And then like this this come from um uh some um uh rat uh brain neurons, right? That they put out and then they put in there. And they like with that, they could put it onto a robot and then have some sort of feedback loop. There it's a rat brain that is controlling this thing, like some some neurons in the rat brain. This crazy stuff, like the like the 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 this computing unit like um is is extremely flexible, right? It's extremely flexible, it's made to learn, right? It uh it will die, like the neuron will die. So there's kind of a pressure that is put into each one of these to be as useful as possible. Um like uh like i- i- it is made to like uh uh to be repurposed if needed, right? It doesn't matter. And it the the whole brain is extremely redundant. Like there's not just one thing in our brain, right? There like there's there's different um study that you could do. Let's say like the split brain experiment where you like cut um the 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 pathway that is that is uh in between the two hemisphere. And you start to see weird stuff because different units are thinking like different things. Um and you start to see like different type of hidden personality within like each of the the hemisphere. Um and like you can even see the people that lost a full hemisphere acting completely normal, right? Because there's a massive amount of redundancy in how like the brain function. Uh but like it it is made to be kind of maximally efficient and still be like as useful as possible under like much circumstances, right? Because there's a evolutionary pressure um to be doing these stuff. So yeah, like that's uh that's the brain in a nutshell. Um I think there's a lot of there's a lot of stuff that we can learn from like uh the brain and then like the the neural network when like you you start to kind of probe them, right? At some point, like a complex enough system um becomes uh have emerging properties, right? And it's just a matter of like the system as a whole, right? Um so with the brain, you see the same thing. You see with just one neuron, it can do some stuff. But like as the neurons like grows and there's population of them like running around and doing things, uh it's different. Uh but the brain has something, I think, that is um currently not well uh modelized um with the neural network, which is like uh the the states, right? Uh the fact that like each computing unit, literally each one of layer one is a mini computer, right? Um yeah, it's fascinating stuff. And these stuff are so complex. I wasn't I was actually studying cell biology before. Uh but then when I like came uh across the the neuron, I was like this is the most interesting thing I've ever seen, right? If you think about it, a brain, a human brain is so far as we know, right? Uh the most advanced like uh the most advanced system that exists in the universe, right? Quote unquote, I don't know, some alien maybe has some thing that is more advanced. But right now, this is the most complex and most advanced uh system that exists, right? Um the layer and upon layer and upon layer of things that are happening is crazy. Like even just a cell is is like very it's a whole organism that is doing multiple thing that is creating machinery within itself to be able to to do things that has like a whole like mis- like skeletal membrane uh that can like shift and 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 move, like all these protein. There's literally machinery, like like literal uh little machine that the the uh cells can create and do stuff. But the neurons take this to a whole uh level because they're coordinating also with the rest and taking input and then changing their composition to keep on firing and then firing in the way that it is useful. Um yeah, man, this shit is 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 uh is super interesting. Uh this should not be, have you seen the guy with the uh mostly empty brain? Yeah, like there there are people um like uh that like have uh like um half a brain, fifty percent that is dead, right? And it don't look like it because the brain is like, like I said, redundant, are able to to do stuff. Um yeah, like uh the brain like it will it will try its best to not die off like uh to have like the whole organism keep on going. Uh which means that like sometimes some neuron has to die, right? Otherwise they're using too much energy for nothing. Um the brain doesn't like that very much. Um this is something we really need to adapt. And then designing specific model for each type of information or sensor is just labor intensive and electric electric if quickly and efficient. Um yeah, I mean like but there is specialization in the brain too. Like if you look here, um cerebellum uh neurons, they are not the same at all, right? Like look at this, uh look at these neurons. Like these these one are wild. Oh geez, no, absolutely not. Um uh maybe not which one, I I would just want to have nice images of the Perkin G cells. Yeah, that's one that I think is a good one, yeah. So like this is a cut uh of the cerebellum, right? And then there there's like there's different uh literal different type of neurons with like different branching structure that exist, right? So like, yes, the brain is very plastic, but you have to remember it's not like one neuron that is like it's not this thing, right? Like this thing doesn't exist, it's not that, like the it's the prototypical view of a neuron, right? But the the amount of diversity of uh neurons in the brain is just cra- like you will not believe like how diverse these stuff are, right? Um and then even the one that are more sensory that are interacting with the environment, they are so fucking different. Like um uh if you think about like the code and cone cells, right? In the eye, um in the the retina, like look at this, like this is a small slice, right? You have like these sensors, right? Which are literal sensors, right? They are doing something very specific. You have these other one that are doing something specific. You have this other like cell that are bipolar, they're doing some like something very specific. And then you have the ganglion cell that is like doing another things that is super specific, right? And these then go and then feed back all the way to like the the uh uh this uh this little uh fiber over there, right? And then it goes jam itself back into um the visual system at the back end of the brain, flipping the connection and it goes to the rest of the cortex. Um like there is so much diversity, right? It's it's crazy, like these things are outside, like they all stem from the same thing, right? It's all like the prototypical cell. But then like it's being uh um uh it's i- i- like it modify itself depending on where it need to be, right? And depending on like the rest of the structure uh that is around it. And then there's kind of a design that is made so that like it can actually do stuff. Um yes, you can recycle some of them, but like most likely like the cells that need to be like um uh need to be there or not there and it's like other type that are uh taking uh taking their place. Um but yeah, even in the cortex, like there's a whole lot a whole lot of varieties of uh of cell that are there. Um they already do that, it's called multimodal model. Um know if there's any uh there are spatial models. Um yeah, what do you mean by spatial? Uh would you say you are mostly in the connection camp? Backprop is the anal optimization algorithm, guided model are der- directly purely from data. We want to capture more invariance, um. Would I be that, would I be in the mostly connectionist camp? Um. I don't know, I don't know if like back back propagation is is all there is. Um I think it's too crude. Think like um like the I like I think it's a good um and also by the way like we might there's may there's maybe multiple way of getting to like artificial general intelligence, right? I'm not saying we should replicate this stuff, right? Uh like I think it would be cool, I think it's a good um that's it, like a uh kind of good I don't know, like something cool to in the uh span of the human race um. try to replicate what the brain is doing and whatnot, the human brain at least. Um, but it doesn't mean like it's the only way to create intelligence, right? So, like, in this case, you have to understand the constraint of this thing, right? Like, this thing is trying, like, it's a whole collection of animal cells that at some point decide to bend together, right, and like to, like, make a, a glomerum of, uh, of themselves. Because the survival rate was like better or some, some way, right? Um, so then there's kind of this intelligence that like emerged to be able to control this and then control the environment and whatever. There's a pressure that is, uh, applied to like this kind of, uh, living lineage. Um, that is relevant for, for us, right, and for animals in generals, man. But like, is this the way to go, like, to create the artificial general intelligence that we, we would like to and that will be useful for us? Maybe not, like, maybe, like, that will, that you don't need to go through that extreme in order to, to get it done, right? Maybe there's, there's other ways of going about it, again, if you, I don't know, like, if, if you think about it, like, it's just one way of going, um, uh, about, like, a good, I don't know if it's gonna be too esoteric, but like, uh, RNA structure. Have you, have you ever stopped and pondered about like? What the, what the heck is a virus? Um. Like, I don't know, man, like, these for me are so fascinating because it's a sort of intelligence of some sort, right? Um, but that is, that is very naked in the way that like the design is, is there, right? It like, it has the same drive as us, which is to reproduce and not have, like, the human lineage die, we have kind of something deep inside us that we don't want that. And some, like, in, in our case, it's a bit more complex because like, we don't want like, uh, like our family and then like there's like our, our regional people, we care about them more deeply, or like our village, or like our city. And like, like, uh, our ethnicity and, and stuff. Um, in, in, it's, there's the kind of the same, like, inherent pressure in like the, the viruses. But everything is stripped away, like a virus is very simple, it's like, um, like most of them, like not, not all of them. There's a capsule which is just protein, right? And then they don't even, most of them don't even have DNA, like, uh, the, the, this long-term storage thing. They just have the RNA, that is the thing that is saying to the machinery that makes the protein, what to do, right? And they don't do it themselves, they rely on other bigger things, like, which is, are, are like all the kind of different cell that they're infecting. And they are in, like, they go, the protein goes, right? And then like the capsule somehow go into the cell and then it's just gonna like shoot out the RNA in various ways, like in, um, in the, I think the bacteriophage, it's like literally a spider that kind of injects RNA. I think I can find the, uh, bacteriophage, I think that's what, uh, is this, is this, yeah, it's this ugly, ugly disgusting thing. Look at that, right? Look at this. Ugly thing, right? Like, that's a, like, this is a protein kind of, uh, capsule. And in here, there's like, either, either RNA or DNA, right? And it's like, it shoot it inside the cell and then the cell will take it in and it will start to kind of like use it, right? Uh, and in this case, um, it's gonna be like a bacteri- uh, uh, bacteria cell. Uh, but you can also, like, others will infect, um, the, uh, the actual, uh, say, uh, animal cells. And it will use the machinery to kind of reproduce itself, right? So, like, you can't, you can't do it alone because there's literally just a bunch of capsule. Uh, but there's kind of the same sort of, like, intelligence that is in this, that is very crude. And, um, that it has a feedback loop with what's working and what is not working. But it's not working like a, like a, I'd say, like, um, uh, a neuron, right? It's not working like this, it's not working like us at all, there's same, there's same inherent pressure, like deep down. But not the same kind of overall structure to like learn and, and do stuff. Um, which is very interesting, right? Like, uh, the, that difference here, I think literally shows that there's various kind of intelligence that you can have and some of them are so alien to us, like, what is the point of this? Why is this there? Like, why do we have this running around, right? And the actual answer to this is because it works, right? And I think it's the same thing with, um, your question for X about like, uh, uh, like, is backprop, uh, handle optimization, I think it does, that, I think that does matter. Like, I think what matters is that is this working or is not working, right? If it's working in some ways, um, it's good enough, like, it's some, some sort of intelligence that we're putting out there. Um, is, are there better intelligence for, that we, the, like, that we could, uh, set up with different type of algorithm? Maybe, it depends on the situation, right? It really depends. So if, let's say for, for this thing, if there was no more cells, right? Will it still survive? No, it corner itself into some dumb, um, uh, setup in this particular case. Um, but somewhere, some, this kind of intelligence that is like jam into this, kind of made the bet, or not, that like, um, there will still be cells around. Okay, so I'm done with this rant about viruses. I love to see a complex collection of another network that are flexible in this regard, like talking advantage of special constraints that they adapt uh, to build specific pathways such and repeats and energy efficient way to accomplish a task, that's the most likely to occur. Baby, that, that could be interesting, yeah, that could be, uh, that could be interesting. I think like, one thing that I'm more excited, like, very excited about, um, and I think we might get there at some point, like, in the near future, it's kind of like a constellation of, um, of system. Right? We already see that with like, um, L M and tool use, right? They, they kind of are able to call tools and then like do that and then they go here and then they do stuff, right? Um, what is starting to be interesting, I see in, in this particular, uh, setup is that these tools could be like neural network on their own, right? And then they can, they could use this, uh, type of feedback to kind of improve and like, uh, decide like, am I doing good here? Do I need like, is, is this like, uh, um, a good setup for me for, for this network or not? And then, like, each of them will kind of modulate itself. And then, like, I think either the L M or whatever, like, structure we have in the middle that is the interface between us and, uh, the system, um, I think the way to kind of, I don't know, recreate a bit this dynamicity in the brain, right, thing going on? It will be to have that constellation, right, really, this, um, uh, this constellation of, um, of different neural network that will then react a bit more to the input-output that are, are given and then they'll maybe change a bit their stuff, so like, oh, we got this, this, uh, really interesting task and I got that and the feedback I got was that it was garbage or that was very good. I'll incorporate that into my training and whatever, I'm gonna train back when I, when I can. But all of these unit will be kind of independent from each other, right? So it's not gonna be like centrally, uh, trained, it will be like, like decentralized, the, trained. I think, I think this is an interesting, uh, avenue that is not like in the sci-fi realm. It's really in the, uh, we could do it right now, look, there's no, that is nothing that is stopping us, right? From, for like, everybody, uh, making specialized, very specialized model, we already do that with like Oggy face and there's multiple space. Uh, but then just incorporate this feedback loop and like have, uh, a central interface for us, or whatever it is, to kind of know, right, what is out there, MCP is getting there, it's kind of like, kind of touching on this idea. Um, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm pretty interesting, uh, interested about here. Okay, so, uh, is it the energy efficient way to accomplish task? Okay, that's pretty much it. So, who we got? We got pretty sidetracked, guys, uh, we're supposed to do correlation, um, yeah. I, I absolutely love, um, I like neurons, I, I don't know why, I don't know why I like them so much. Okay, so, let's get back to this. Um, I see it's more specific example, but I love the ability to pick themselves, like instead of doing something productive, they find a way to get reward feedback. Yeah, like, uh, reward hacking, um, yeah, um. Okay, see you, man, thanks for the, thanks for the chit chat. Okay, so, let's, let's get back to this. Um, okay, so what is the output I'm getting here? I am not getting the, um, the right ones, half of what it should be. And in this part, I think it has the right shape. Right, at least. Uh, but definitely not, not the right output that we're getting here. Yeah. Um. We're not even close. And I think this is so simple, but I somehow don't see it, um, on this front. I'm actually gonna look at the, the third one because like this one will make use of everything, right? So it's making use of this part and then this part. So we have our covariance matrix and then we have our standard deviation for X and Y. Then we're multiplying them together. Uh, but somehow, yeah, this somehow, I'm not, um, so X and X and then this times that. Yeah, we're, we're still going with the, what, what you were just saying. I guess the response to that is, is it just an algorithm, is it just the stochastic execution of various deterministic algorithm? My interest is something like a virus is more of an algorithm rather than pure intelligence coming from someone fully neural to viruses. And I'll be quiet about philosophy so it can work. It depends, like, if you, if you, if you look at it, right, um, at the molecular level, there is no difference really, right? Um, like, uh, and I'm ma- may gonna be, get blasted, right? Uh, but people that, like, um, that are, like, uh, studying biology and stuff. But really, it's not that different, right, if you think about it, because, like, the viruses, um, from what I understood, they could have DNA or RNA, depends, right? But, um, it's kind of the, the same substrate that is anyway inside the cells. Like, there's no difference, uh, uh, over there. The complexity is smaller, right, because you don't need a lot of the machinery, right? But it's the same kind of thing that is in, in there, right? And if you think about it, right, in animal cells, the, 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 uh, I think a carrot cells, the main difference is that it's a bunch of cells that have the machinery to communicate and coordinate together. Right? And then, like, they can decide to change their morphology in the way that they're the physiology in order to, like, uh, interact in some ways. And then they have like a inherent contract between them that, like, they're okay to die if the rest is okay to survive, right? Um, which is not that different if you think about it as a virus. But a virus is like, I have a protein shell that is protecting my instruction that is inside of me, the RNA or the DNA. I'm gonna inject myself into like these things, I don't know what it is, but like, and then this will make more of me. So, like, we're, we're good, we're doing the stuff that we're supposed to do, right? And the bacteria is kind of the same thing, right? It's like, it's one cell that doesn't care much about the others and then they will do its stuff, eat whatever, eat, reproduce, and then keep on doing whatever it has to, um, to do. Um, and each kind of cell type has like a specific, um, like a thing that it could do and that is related to its environment that it's surviving in, but, uh, with the same kind of drive within it, which is like, you have to survive, right? And like, that's kind of, that's kind of all there is, right? You have to survive and it has to work, right? There's some reward that like make this, uh, goes and goes and goes, um. So I don't see them as like that different, like, uh, yes, if you look at the full human and you look at like a bacteriophage just right next to it, like, okay, these two has nothing to do with one another. But if you zoom in, right? I mean, like, uh, they're, at the core of, at, at the very core, they're not that different. Like, what drives them to keep on going, it's really not that diff- different. And if you, if you see a bacteriophage or like whatever viruses and you find this like, um, barbarous a bit, like, uh, I'd say it like, um, um, uncivilized, I would say, like, because it's crude, it's like, I have a protein shell and I'm gonna inject myself over there and then make more of me, that's the only thing I'm doing, right? But if you look at the cell, uh, in a, that is living within a system like, uh, uh, the human body, right? There's so much death, right? Like, there's so much cell suicide that is going on, um, on an ongoing basis just to make it work, right? Um, like the cells will literally kill themselves with apoptosis, that is called, uh, in order to make sure that the rest is, is going, uh, great, right? All for the greater good of like this, like, uh, substrate, the DNA, the RNA that is in there, that is telling it, like, you should be acting this way. Uh, and if the cells doesn't want to do that and decide that they will just override and not kill itself when it's supposed to be killing itself in the, in the body, you get cancer, right? And then you just, you, the whole body might just fucking die. So, like, that's it, I mean, like, it's the same drive that is like, um, um, putting every, every one of these, uh, uh, these, uh, um, living thing forward. But does a re- virus receive energy which is wise for doing its job? What produce versus, are versus the product of another cell? Are they cost efficient way to consume origin? I have no clue where they come from, man, like, uh, viruses are like, they re- they need cells to kind of work, right? But that, like, they gonna, uh, do the, do the machinery trick to hijack it and then like, they will go on and, and do their stuff and then just reproduce and you have more of them and then like it just goes and goes and goes. And they will mutate like crazy, right, also to kind of, uh, be there, um. Yeah, like, that's kind of what's up, that's kind of what's up with the, the virus. I have no clue where they're, where they're coming from, like, to be honest, like, I don't know what's the purpose of all of this. But then you get like to, toward like a bit more philosophy, like, uh, is, are the viruses, um, a more stupid way of like, uh, doing whatever we're doing right now? Uh, is, i- is it the better use of the time to try to calculate cosine similarity? Um, like actually, actually correlation matrix, uh, and then just fucking not getting it right? I'm not sure, I'm not sure, man. Okay, the function will take in it, okay, um. So I'm effectively at the same point as, um, as before, there is not much, uh, there's not much that is, uh, being changed here, um. I feel like the covariance matrix is maybe not right, uh, and I think that's the same thing that I, I came, eh, as a conclusion last time. Um. Yeah, maybe I'm not, I'm not sure. Okay, wait, what? Okay, I think like I, I need to understand a bit more how I'm, or supposed to, uh, calculate these stuff. So, NumPy covariance. Uh. Wait a second. Okay, let's read the manual. What is going on? Um, esti- estimate covariance metric given data and weight, covariance indicator level, which, okay, that's good. So what are our input? Uh, array, I want to, one D or two D array containing multiple variable and observation. Natural set of variable and observation. Okay, well, this, okay, that's good, perfect, this is good. So X, Y, yeah, that's kind of how we should be using it. And, um, if raw var is true, then each row represent a variable with observation the column. Otherwise, the relationship is transposed, each column present a variable. I, I'm not sure if, I think, like, I think it shouldn't do that, I think that's good. Therefore not false is by. Okay, ma- maybe it's like, maybe it's this, maybe like I don't have to do any of this. Is that it? Bias. Uh, this one, I don't know. But like, the raw var thing. Yeah, we're now, we're close, we're, we're not, we're not close at all here. Uh, I, I think the form is also all messed up, wait. Print, uh. Core matrix. Oh, wait wait wait, we're supposed to now yeah, this this part is messed up. We're supposed to have um two uh. Yeah, uh if the objective function of life is to survive and produce, then I'd say that's pretty effective, if not boring, a way to optimize the objective. Um a lot of this stuff in the in a living organism, right? Is 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 like driven by death. Um straight up just death, like uh eh like i if you look at how the neurons will survive, like will 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 find their connection, what you what you have, you have death, right? Like even like um at the utility level of different cells, right? It's driven by death, like um um the cells that are lining like I think the intestine or like uh 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 some lower part of the the body, they have a lifespan of like something like thirty days or something like that, right? They are born and then they do their stuff and there there's like they're in there and then they die. And if like they stay too long, you're gonna get cancer, right? You're gonna like they're gonna mutate and then like it's not gonna be good for you, right? Um same thing with the skin, right? Like it's layer upon layer of like cells that are slowly getting shredded, right? To protect the rest of the organism, so they they're born and then they're gonna go there and then they're gonna die. So um yeah, but it works, like that's the system that kinda work. So I guess uh if it works, it will be, right? That's kinda what's up. Um I think uh 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 with intelligence in general, like if if it works, it's gonna be, like it's gonna be there and it's gonna have input and feedback into the into the the environment um yeah. Okay, so that should be false like this, because if I think this is where I was, if I if this is false I got the right shaped here. Not the not the right numbers, but the right shape and um I have a deja vu, I think I did the same iteration um. Okay, I feel like that's good. But maybe like NumPy S T D, maybe it's this, right? Okay, what do we have? We have an array, that's good, and then we have an axis, axis or actually won't just answer it. Computer, the default is computer standard division of the flattened array um. But in my case what do I even have to begin with? The function should take a two D NumPy array X. So it's two dimensional, let's let's try it out, right? So let's try this part out. Okay, let's go over here. Hey, what do we have? We have one one two. And then we have three four. And then five and six. And what do I have here? I have like this is my covariance four everywhere. Hey, can I can I just validate that, like calculate covariance? Uh. Yeah, I think is there is there a website I can uh I can just go? I don't think th I don't think there there is gonna be, oh, that's done um. Okay, so I have four four, four four here. I should maybe do it by hand and figure it out if this is good, okay? And I have my standard deviation here for the X, which is two numbers and like here in this case is how many numbers? Three, right? But what the hell is happening, two two? One two, one two. Wait, one two three, one two three, okay cool. And here do I have the right shape? One two three, yes, I have the right shape, but I have the right numbers. Good. So this is my standard deviation, this is my other standard deviation and I get that in order to get but why do I have? Wait, but okay, I think I'm I'm getting there. So I'm doing divided by this quantity, which is a summation. Uh this quantity which is also summation for okay, for this number. Okay. Okay, no, that's not what I need. Should do I by this, this, that? Hmm. Oh, am I just dumb here? So maybe it's not, uh wait. Yeah, maybe just straight up dumb. Wait a second. Do I just need to multiply these two? No, just that can be right. Yeah, that's How that to be a bit too uh dumb? Uh wait uh. Wait second. Yeah, I don't think so. Oh, wait, 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 wait. There you got it! Let's remove all this garbage. Is that it? I got one, okay. Okay, I think I think uh I think we're getting there, okay, what's up here? Okay, this is good. This is not good, this is good. The one is moving, this is nice, but I'm not getting, oh, I think I would think this one is uh uh it should be correct. Uh. But uh this one is absolutely out of whack. No, I don't think this is the right way of calculating it at all. Um. No. Wait, is it because of that? Maybe not, this one uh yeah, that makes no sense, okay. Okay, whoa wait, wait, this one I got it right and then what's the actual value that I'm having everywhere here? This, for this specific problem, I'm just having an issue with understanding um the shape and that I have to put everything together um. So the covariance matrix seems to be alright. Getting the right output, but then why is this one not uh proper then? This is the covariance I have. Yeah. I have the one that's right spot, but like these numbers are not right at all. But I think I have the right uh oval shape. Uh yeah. But in this case, this is is this the Y none? There is one Y, there is one X here. Yeah, I'm not sure, sure. We're gonna ask our uh can we get the can we get some hint here? Okay, cool. But we don't matching, okay, I get well, give me give me a sec, I'll just remove that. Run it. And then it'll be able to tell me my hint. It's pretty cool feature mode, by the way. Okay, cool, so this okay, this part when Y is provided, I need to put the raw var to think false or something like that? Bias to true also. I think that's it, wait. Yeah, I think that's one thing here. Okay, cool, so let's get hint. Using different approach for the case when Y is none versus when Y is provided. For Y equal none case, you correctly calculate per step through division with X is real. For Y not case, you're calculating a single standard deviation for the entire X and Y arrays. Okay, yeah, okay. The shape of your correlation matrix doesn't match the expected output. Okay, okay, cool. I think there's multiple things um wait. Yeah, I'd still it's ecosystem, the c the um um yeah, it's just the ecosystem. Everything is already kinda done. Okay, wait. What are we saying here? Wait, what the heck? Okay, wait, is it just uh is it just this? I don't think so. Okay, wait, it was just this, okay. I was just absolutely dumb on this front and this I think it still acts as zero. My code is becoming like a minefield here, it's crazy stuff. Okay, upper angle not be broke case together with shape four four. Uh yeah, I'll have to show the stuff. Oops. Okay, so two down, one to go, let's see what's up. We're getting there. Uh why did you choose learn Python over alternative language? I actually studied my stuff with MATLAB, right? Which I would not recommend to anyone ever under any circumstances. Don't don't uh it's it's like one of the worst languages I've ever seen in my whole life. And Python compared to MATLAB is a is a breath of fresh air, right? And the main difference between the two, like like MATLAB has this perk where you can see stuff and like there there there's the whole I E and stuff. Uh you can get that with Spider and Python. Um but the issue like that you have most of the time is like you have no help, right? Um like you 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 have no external help that like uh MATLAB is a closed source programming language for like kind of closed source system, right? Um the packages are kind of very limited and and stuff and they were like a very well guarded um. So there's not that much out there, so if you want to do stuff, like you have to kinda cobble your stuff together and then just double check if this library is still maintained or still working. Versus Python stuff, people are just building stuff and then shipping it out there, right? So it's great, like uh you don't have to think that much eh about like all the different level, right? And you can just go and like pick whatever is working and uh like work on that, right? Um that's one thing that is eh when you just look at the language, it's it's hard to um value it um as much, but the community aspect is so huge, like uh um yeah, like it's it's so so important, like you like you 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 understand the importance of community when you're working on a problem set that is so niche that there's basically almost nobody that can help you. But if on top of that, you can't even fix your bug in your code because you're kind of like one of the three people in the world that is using this same library that is not working since two thousand sixteen, right? Like you're like you then you ha you hate MATLAB, right? Multiple example of this. Um and then things just go to a crawl, right? Well, if there is already a big community, you might find an answer that will be able to like uh help you out with your stuff. Hi Zinab, hope you're having good day or night or yeah. Okay, I'm messing up this, like um there's some ways that I'm calculating calculating this that is absolutely not right. Um let's actually not return anything, well actually, let's not do anything here. And uh just do core matrix, I just wanna see what's up when I'm doing this, what's the shape of everything? See how genuine Linux is or Mac that have first develop enough Python coming to, yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe, yeah. Okay, wait, the heck is going on? So I have this of shape uh two. And my covariance is this. Yeah, my covariance is not right at all. I have to transpose this stuff. I have to transpose this stuff? I think I might. This you see how long it's taking me for this one this is a an exercise in like reading this stuff properly and trying to not be an idiot. It has to have the same form as M. Okay well uh why the heck is this one specifically? Um okay wait wait so one two one two so same shape as this no this one is bigger. Yeah there's okay. It shouldn't be. Here I have four of them. But my covariance here there's one two. Well that's good no I think it's fine. Actually it makes sense because there's four element um. No there's eight. Yeah I think something is wrong in how I'm Running that. Oh you're from Pakistan I hope you're safe by the way I've just heard the news like about the current war well I don't know if it's war or skirmish. Um yeah stay safe Zinab. Okay standard deviation I think we're not doing too bad I think like the standard deviation we're good here yes. Uh it's really a covariance that has a weird shape in our case um. What is going on when it's like just this one alone? Does it have the same shape? Yeah it's the same shape it's one two one two yeah. To love package manager. Now my covariance matrix is all messed up here in this particular case I am not doing it right um. I um which makes sense because like if let's say okay hypothetically if I didn't have that right what do I have? I don't have a as big as a covariance matrix. Um at this point I should even kinda just like do it myself or something like that do I have to transpose this stuff in order to Kinda make it work like this one? Um not too sure. I don't think it has any impact uh whatsoever but it it is very big um. So wait. I'm gonna need some hint here please. Okay let's go like this. Let's get this out. Let's do the outer here run the code get the hint. What is going on man tell me. Come on. Work for the single matrix case but there's an issue when oh you're in the little two matrix case when Y is provided and pick of doesn't return what you might expect. It actually returned a combined covariance matrix of shape yeah that's what I have. Need to either extract the cross covariance portion from this common matrix or calculate the cross covariance directly using a different approach. Yeah I get that so. What? Oh okay 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 wait wait wait. Cross covariance matrix uh Now I think it's another Wait what? Wait a second. Yeah wait a second here like how do I even need to like use this Y here? Wait. Correlation matrix for a given data set the function take uh two D number and also two D number Y the function should calculate the correlation matrix of I X with stuff. Correlation between X and Y is the covariance of X and Y. At this point man I think I can just like pop off completely. Uh uh formula yeah like uh at this point this is not useful at all. Yeah man like what the fuck I'm doing right now so wait it's Jesus. Yeah okay. But what is it returning me? It's the cross covariance. Uh it actually when I combine cause covariance matrix of shape. Yeah I think I'm just gonna like Make it my own like um Uh covariance curve. And I'm gonna have my X here my Y here and then I'm just gonna run through it right I just need to calculate the mean. Okay. Yeah I'll get uh yeah. But I think so. Yeah I get my mean I get my And I sum them up. Is that it right? Okay well let's let's do it like knucklehead style right we're gonna do it um np dot mean X Gonna be the X hat. And then we're gonna do a Y hat here np that mean Y. Right and I'm just gonna print them up so X hat. Okay. Y hat. All of this do not have to do to calculate by hand and I ended up just having to calculate it by hand man uh Should get better at number I mean like um at this point uh Okay wait what do I have uh blah blah okay this doesn't matter I just want to Have uh my debugging my print statement. Okay uh is that the right? Get two point wait 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 no I need to do the mean but like not like that on a specific axis. Because these are two different feature right so like On this place if you launch it um in this specific case the output need to be at this um So if we're doing this covariance formula here uh That will be that for the Okay this is the variance and this is the covariance of this one with this other one and this one with this other one. Okay. Uh wait. I think I need to set the axis. Okay wait. I think I need to Should use notebook mode a bit more. Okay well that's good the one and uh for the X we have one zero half half And we have one two four yeah that seems to be fair that's the mean good so I got my mean here. And now we just need to um get this going with the the rest of my stuff. Of So I guess Uh This minus the wait. Put it here. X I minus that and we sum all of them up. So um X minus X hat. Right? This is uh uh my and I have to s yeah okay. Oh shit sorry it's X yeah I think I need to kinda get a bit better at making the covariance stuff and then once I get that I'll just jam it here um Okay wait so we get X hat here and then I get Uh seems to be good and I had to sum them up. Yeah I have to sum them up and then multiply them together um no well actually multiply then sum uh all of the element up. So something like So uh That quantity Like this. Hmm multiply by that quantity I'm having trouble with the shape of this whole thing. Um I'm think it's right uh because it's gonna be element wise um Okay wait uh this is good this is good and this is the last bit Here. Uh makes sense and do I have to I have to sum them up? And then divide by N. So I'm doing all this summing them up divide by N minus one or N depending if it's population or sample I always assume it's popu- lage will bias is true as well. The bias is true. Yeah this is N which is population um. Okay. But what's the Oh wait wait no wait just gonna remove these. We're very close to going back to basic here okay wait uh anything is sure but I believe it's a metric that hold the relation between two value like a final like ratio. Uh are you trying to get the relation between a collection of two D coordinate is to get the plot weighted average and range um Well at the moment right I'm trying to uh I'm trying to get the um uh the covariance uh just the struc the whole structure right uh but at this point I'm not um I'm not getting it uh too right Uh over there um let's actually see the difference between what the heck I'm doing and uh the actual covariance Over there I think that would be useful. You're not even close no okay so I think here if we go back to drawing board right first thing I need to understand here is um first off So what's the what's the shape of Uh of this data set right it's kinda kinda having trouble with this uh it's very basic but I'm having trouble understanding like what is what in this case so um For a given data set this function should take so the rows are the observation I guess and then this are the features these are the feature set I believe um Yeah I guess this is it right so rows are the sample and then this is the feature set and then um W like when this is it when Y is none I I got that like we're doing this we calculate the standard deviation We're doing our little outer here um so we're good. But when it's Y I'm getting like All mixed up with this specific uh uh implementation of the covariance matrix like this one I absolutely can't For the life of me uh get it right um Which is all fine so like and what it is telling me at this point is that the shape is all messed up like um When I'm when I don't have that like and if I just If I just go with uh this uh version that I had um wait I don't I don't need any of this. Like the shape is pretty messed up and um here. And uh it's because of like how it's um sorry it's because of uh It's too interesting to be mindful of how they combine how they extract relevant cross-range portion also consider whether you need to reshape or transpose and input to get the correct dimension for the final Correlation matrix so I think it's just a matter of extracting the right um Uh Yeah it's it's just to extract like what's happening. Yeah, it's it's just to extract like what's happening um when I get when I get this ones, right? When I get this covariance matrix um yeah. Yeah, I think I'm just gonna have to extract this stuff and then I think add them together or something. So wait, let's think it through. We have that and then we have this. Right? And I have that and I have this afterward. And it should be minus 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 one minus one, one one. Like that's the X, that's the Y. Uh this is the X again. X um X two. Yeah. Uh no wait. Why do I have so much? Oh man, like this one I I I this is the part that I don't like. Like when you're you have this black box and you're trying to fill it around. Um I don't wanna go and try to write the covariance matrix myself. I think like but if I extract this properly, I'll be able to kinda um uh reshape the reshape them like like properly but um I have to fucking know what is the output of this covariance thing when you have the X and the Y? Like what is going on? So when you have the X and Y it four by four. Okay, but I don't care about that. No. No, this is not what I no, this is not the one I want. This one. So when you have X, N, Y, right? This is a three by three like this. Oh, they stack it before. Huh. Okay, 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 okay. Why are they doing this? Where are they? My guy, why are the why are you doing that prior? Ah, I think think I get it. Uh and wait, I'll call it Z then. So just overwrite that. I think this is it. I think you have to stack them just prior to do that. Uh M has more than two dimension. Well, wait. In this case it's like oh no, yep, they're two they're more than two dimension. So if I print it I just need to put it into the right shape and then just jam it in here and I should be good to go. Yeah, okay, wait. I just not have to uh I'll just return here. Here on the X or the yeah, here. It's too nested though. Think I have to stack them like that. One zero zero one, one two. Wait, what? Where are you going? Okay, wait a second. So NumPy stack join the seconds of array along a new axis, yes? But they're joining in which axis in this case? No, axis zero should be good. X and Y, yeah, that's X and that's Y. One zero zero one and then one two three four, okay. And okay, they're all joined into the same kinda world right now. So alternatively speaking uh but it's a I think it's it's a shape too much. We're gonna get there, folks. Like uh I feel it. I feel like we're we're um a hundred run code uh closer to uh yeah, this is that. Of course, like if I do this, it's uh it's this one. If I do this, it's gonna be the other one because that's the axis that I'm using right now. Um this makes a lot of sense. Yeah, that's because I just I just stacked them. Um so if I do that, I'm gonna see all of them. Um but if I'm doing the covariance here uh the shape will be all fucked up. Like what is this guy doing then? So they're gonna stack? They're gonna put it double? What are they doing? Yeah, I feel like it's not right. And they do np curve and then they get that. Have to do X Y. They get the same thing. Huh. Wait. But they have just one axis, right? Oh my god, man. Like this? This is uh is it uh no, wait. Is it unstable? Oh, it's pretty good. Now my core issue right now is I have no clue how to use the covariance NumPy function. I have absolutely no clue how to extract that godforsaken um output to jam it into and create the correlation matrix. It's what happening right now. So like the output of that is absolutely uh not the right one and I'll need to figure out how to how to wrangle it out. If correlation matrix is incomplete, you could calculate the correlation but you need to fix the correlation formula. Uh yeah, that's good. For each pair of variable, divide their covariance by the product. Yeah, yeah. X shape, Y shape. Yeah, this this is good. Like it's just because I I uh I have it like this, right? But this this is fine. I will have it there. Um so that's good. No, actually no, that's not good uh to comment this out. So again uh Cross covariance between X and Y but where to combine X and Y to a single matrix and calculate the full covariance matrix. Try to think about how to calculate the crosscovar covariance between X and Y or restructure your approach to extract the relevant part of the covariance matrix. Which is what where I'm at right now. That's uh that's where that's where we're struggling really. It's it's uh it's this it's this little little portion here. Okay, let's look at the shape once more. Uh what is it saying? It doesn't return a cross covariance between X but rather combine X and Y to a single matrix and calculate the full covariance matrix. Then how do I calculate the cross covariance, guys? Yeah, thank you. See you tomorrow. So if you if you uh for X if you um uh join back in six hours, I will still be there. Have a good night, man. Um okay, cross covariance calculation in NumPy. What's up? Okay, and what wait, wait, wait. Crossvariance. Uh that that that. Wait a second. What are they saying? Have to extract. Okay. Because this is okay, wait, wait, wait. I think I get it. Okay, wait. I thi I think I think I g I get it, right? Yeah, okay. Some part of this is not the cross covariance. I think I saw it. Uh wait, I saw it somewhere, not here. I don't remember where I saw it. I I saw it just like a few minutes ago. Um Yeah, I like So what's the shape of this, right? I think the four by four. Yeah, and what I need is a two by two. Okay, we're getting there. Cross covariance matrix. Uh I should see the visual. And it's shape of uh it has to be a two by two. X one, Y one, X two. Yeah, wait, wait, wait. I I think we're we come I I just need to out uh extract um some portion of this that is relevant and some portion of this that is absolutely not relevant at all. Um in order to get my like proper output here. But we're getting there. So I got my four by four over here and uh these are the numbers that I have. So this is the first one and this is the second one. This added dimension and I have another dimension here. I think some of them are fucking useless and some of them are useful. Wait, okay. The np curve function return a covariance matrix when imputing two one D array, which is not the case right now. We have we have two two D array. The off diagonal element of this matrix represent the cross covariance between the two dataset. So in our case, what do we have? We have four what do we have here? Only have two of them. Right? We have uh jeez. One two four. Uh right. That's useless. What they're saying? They're saying like the off diagonal elements represent the cross covariance between the two dataset. We my stuff need to be a two by two. Columnism. Well, what the heck? But right now I have a four by four. And like technically speaking, I should have a two by two like uh like in this particular setup. It's just concatenating some of them in here. Right? I think this is X one, Y one, uh Y zero. Uh This last part is repeating. It's like the inverse of it. Right? Uh this one is not inverse of like what the fuck is going on? Now I'm gonna need to be baby stepped uh over there. I think like can I um okay. Guys, we're gonna go and baby step our way to a solution. So um let me introduce you to a new feature. Uh it's this one and you're gonna split the problem into a small problem, which in my case it seems like actually I'm gonna put it here. I'm still knucklehead in here. I still can't do it um for some reason. I I I can't. So if a second data array is not given, use X for both. This ensure we always have two array to work with when calculating correlation. So input you have that, output you read that. So set Y if not if none uh return Y if provided authorize X. What the wait. What is this saying? I If a second er data array Y is not given, use X for both. Use X for what? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, but okay, I get it. I get what they're they're okay, 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 okay. I I I like that. I like this um um this way of thinking. So np so set Y if none. So um That's what I did last time and it didn't work. Uh sorry, I'm just gonna move out of the way. Sorry for that. Um I'm gonna put myself back here. It's exactly what I did last time and for some reason I got so lost for like like lot of hours. Um so set Y if none, this is the function and then yeah, return Y if provided, otherwise X. So basically this case we just return always Y and we should be good. And uh this is just the the usefulness of Yeah, cool. Good. I'm not an idiot. I'm able to do that. That's good to know. So the next baby step here. The covariance between two dataset measure how change in one variable or stability with change in another. We use a format divide by the number of sample, not sample minus one for consistency with typical NumPy approach. Okay, so this thing Yes? Y equals same as X. The okay, so I'm do I'll do the same. If Y is none Y equal X, right? And we always working with um with a Y in there. So sh like here, should I just uh go ahead and um should I use this or no? I mean I mean I feel like it's uh telling me to just run and oh wait. No. Because this will this is the stuff that I was doing before and it was messing my whole thing. Difficult uh I cases make sure you're understanding input properly and checking boundary condition. Yeah, I get that. So here it's like there's Xs and what I get is that this this monstrous thing um which is because I'm not computing the covariance properly, right? That's all there is. And um dude, I should not even do that. I should just like calculate the mean and like X hat here and and not by the mean of X um with Xs is zero I guess. And same thing here Y add the mean Y axis equals zero. Okay, so I have my means here and I have to do well the expectation of um uh wait X minus X hat times Y minus Y hat. And then I think that's it. CoV X Y guess is that. Or not there yet. Like I get one number. Uh it's the right one, but like the this is the this is not it. Um I think it's because of how I'm doing the mean. Uh yeah, it's like it's this. I think it's axis zero still. Um should check the shapes. Uh yeah, uh I'm getting there, but like that's not exactly what I need to do. Um wait, so I'll like to print X hat here and say it's X hat. But we're making headways folks, like um theoretically I will need just like five more live stream and we should be good. I got the hard ones, right? But this medium one for some reason it uh it is it is it is pretty difficult. So okay, wait, I have my okay X add, my hat, fantastic. And I have the mean uh per uh per columns. Good. Got the mean per columns. Fantastic. Now like that's good, right? So what I'm doing then is this X minus mean of this whole thing, right? Like am I like am I am I fucking it up when I okay, so um uh so X X scale, let's say, equal that. Right? And then Y scale, same thing. Okay, and I can do that here scaled is equal to scale here, Y scaled here. Okay, whatever, doesn't matter, can run that. What do I have? My X scale is is um this, which is fine. And my Y scale is this also, which is also fine, right? So then I need to multiply them together. So X Y mut equal X scaled times Y scaled, right? And then I'm gonna print that. Y mult. We're we're crawling toward um a solution. Okay, so we have one thing. Okay, this is this is okay. But I I don't think this is how I should be doing it. Um because the like the expectation is over the whole thing, right? So that's good. And this column wise. But I need to have a four by four at the end. But um at that point I'm not I'm not having any of this. Seems to be like this should be a yeah, I think the mean is sticking on the wrong axis here. Well, I know I'm I'm scaling them properly, I think. Yeah, I think I'm scaling them properly because you're doing one minus three minus two. So that's that's not too bad. So I have that. But then why I have a four? Because it's a f f feature. No, I feel like there's a summation. Um I think like where was I looking at this? Like the cross covariance um covariance calculation. There's a summation that is happening. You multiply them and then you sum them up. But I yeah, I don't get it. Like wha how can you Is it because I'm getting only this? Because I'm getting the up diagonal. Am I getting A with A? I'm getting like A B, A B. Is this what is going on? Uh in this case it doesn't matter because like they're all the same, like it's all Xs. Uh is this the type of issue I'm having right now? Then I have to kinda cobble it together? Like what the that that's that's what we're trying to do here. Because I'm gonna have to do like X. If I do X with X we have A here and then the B here. But um in my case I have more more than that. I have like two feature set. Jesus. Or two D. Wait, uh X and Y minus the mean of X. Well, i is it this? Well, sorry, I'm looking at another implementation uh of the formulation that we're talking about here. Um which is the mean of X and Y minus the mean of X times the mean of Y. But is not on this axis on no wait. Wait, the fuck is going on? Perform column by column. Am I doing this column by column or doing like row by row? Oh. Oh no, I think I got it. I think it yeah, I think I got it. Okay, so for yeah, I need to be column by column, right? So one um one two one two also for the for the Y and I literally do this calculation of the covariance um on each of the one D and then I construct this stuff. Okay, so for I in uh range, I don't know, like uh X uh X that um uh size, I guess. Uh wait. Print X that size. Is this how I get this number? No, that's not what I need. I need like um um is it length? Trying to get the okay X of that's a zero, right? That's kinda how I'm gonna get the number of columns. Two, yeah, okay, perfect. So for I in range this, right? And then for J in range length of Y zero. Ooh, and then like at this point I just need to construct my um covariance uh matrix, right? And it's nothing. And in here what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna do uh uh my row cov matrix um equal nothing. And I'm gonna input that when I'm done here. Let's see here, pass. I'm gonna do cov matrix dot depend my row cov matrix here and in in there. I'm gonna calculate the uh the stuff that I need. So here in this case my uh my small X will be X at uh like this, I guess. Yeah, it will be like this. And here it will be the same thing. Uh Y equal uh Y J no, this J. That's I think this is what we're trying to do. And from that point, this is where I'm gonna put all this. Right? I think it's not that efficient how I'm doing it. But at this point I don't care about efficiency much. Um we put it here. It should be nice if it was a bit bigger though. Um okay, wait, is this I'll keep the print statement here. Because I'm gonna need them. Okay, oof, I'm doing all my calculation there. And I think I think we can kinda like simplify it a bit. Um so here my cov of X Y here. There we go. And I just need to uh print that too. Okay, and then my row cov matrix dot pen cov X Y. At this point like I think we just use like the the covariance nor normal uh the normal version of it. And I'll just put that here. Okay, it won't work, but at least I'm gonna be able to see something. And I think I it just clicked in my mind what the heck I need to uh what the okay I need to do. Give you a solution for breakdown without losing uh flame score. Um no, I don't want to. I don't want to, bro. Don't tempt me like this. Um okay, wait. So uh that's my mean. Does no, wait 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 wait. No, this mean is wrong because I need to keep it for X, right? So I need to okay, do it for X, do it for Y. Same thing here. I need to do my X, my Y X scale and then top top top. Okay, cool. And then here I need to do uh wait, mult X Y mult multiplied it's this times this and I just need to take that. Okay. Okay. Okay, I got it right. So that means I'm not I'm not fully stupid here. Right? So this is good. Right, this is nice. This is simple, right? Simple for loop stuff. Wait, no, I didn't get it. Why why did? No, I didn't get it right. Uh I th I think w I think yes, I think we're Yeah, I think it's it's good because like I have the right shape over here. Um And that's it. I think this is all this uh this is all I need. I don't need the rest of um And I don't need to do all of this. I think like that's good enough for me right now. I think like uh I'm just gonna exit this. I think I understood where I got wrong. Um It's just like I should not use the the old that so if y is none, uh it is not none anymore. We take we take it like this. And then we take the covai co covariance matrix like that. And we run it through this whole thing, right? Yellow style. Um wait, this I don't need. And at this point, I return the covariance matrix and I'm good to go. I it should be it should be good. Oh wait, no, this is just the covariance. I need still to calculate the correlation. So okay, go. I have my covariance matrix at this point, right? So at this point, my covariance matrix should be good. And I just need to calculate the standard deviation properly and do my other um my other thing uh properly. So if I do that Like this, and then I just need to calculate it like that for this part over here, right? Okay, if I do it this way, I don't need any of this. Then Uh and then I can just return the correlation matrix here because my covariance matrix should be fine. Yes, we got it. We Got it. Jeez. Wow. This took so long. That was like In total, I think I I have to s has spent like A solid five hours on this across different days. Uh finally got it. But these um they show was I uh had no clue How in the sweet hell the NumPy at COV was doing the covariance Uh matrix uh the correlation No, the covari covariance calculation ended up Doing it all by manual loops. And it worked out. Whew. Thank you, thank you, thank you E D Tab James. We we finally got it. I think uh I deserve a nice yellow here. Um I'm not I'm not fully challenged. I think I was just somehow somewhat challenged on the on the correlation. Uh we got the ghost seed I've got them and like um it took what? It took us like two try? This one, man, I think I almost broke the server as as much I was hitting like to run the code and the hint, right? And the the elements were running around trying to understand where I messed it up. Um yeah, but like uh uh It this is a good example of How to say it, man? Like um Like S sometimes the issue i is 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 purely just um You not understanding the layer of abstraction properly, right? Um and then using it wrong, right? And like the interface is supposed to be in some format and you would like Try to like wrangle around, but you uh don't understand what it's returning for real. Um yeah, it happens in so many different ways like uh 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 like be like sometimes it's fine if you remove the layer of abstraction and you start to play around with it. And every every pain that we went through here, the only reason we went through it is because I stubbornly didn't want to do this. I didn't want to do like I didn't want to do two for loops, right? Um yeah, I didn't want to do two for loops and a bunch of means. And I ended up like uh banging my head around like that stuff uh for days. Um yeah. Right? That's it. That's it, folks. Uh we're we're done with this. Uh like take a crack at it, honestly. Like uh this one is a good one. Uh highly recommend. And uh yeah, that's it. I'm gonna log off in like about five minutes. So if you have any last question about anything neuroscience wise, AI wise, learning wise, like let me know. I'll be there. I'm gonna gap grab some uh some water and I'll be back in uh in uh thirty seconds. Okay, back. Wait, so um yeah, no worries. Thanks, Mo, for the great platform. Like keep it up, man. Uh love it. Yeah, good stuff over there. Um Oh, there's even a comment section. I like, is it new? That's part. Okay, well keep it up, man. Um really cool stuff. Alright, folks. Have a great night. As you can see, uh it's pretty late where I'm at. Um thank you for tuning in. We're gonna do that again uh next uh next week, most likely, actually most likely in uh on Sunday. We're gonna go uh again. I I'll try to blaze through every single one that I have left that is on the medium or easy difficulty in linear algebra. Hopefully, we can uh can be done with this whole section and then we can move on to uh The statistic or probability uh setup. So have a good one. Thank you for uh staying there.